We'll call to order the June first, twenty twenty-one meeting of the full city council. The clerk will call the roll for attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley? Grady?
Bartley's here, if I can work this. There I am.
There he is.
Hey David.
Hello, Hernandez?
Here.
Lady?
Yeah, good evening and I'm present.
LeBron Martinez? Lacy?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Paulman?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Alright, so good evening, everyone. The first item that's laid on the table is the budget. We know that the budget meetings are coming around, one starting tomorrow. So that can stay there. Two and three, anything on two? Hearing nothing. Three is the electric poles on Valley Heights. I do have an update. I did speak with HG&E. They need a little more time. They're working on some more calculations. I know Counselor Sullivan and I filed an order to go into DGNR and Counselor Bartley said he'll take that up for us and I appreciate that. As to seeing if there's other ways to fund the underground wiring instead of the other two options. So HG&E has asked for a little more time. So I think the proper procedure would be to open the public hearing to then continue it to the fifteenth to give them more time.
Make a motion to open the public hearing for the purpose of continuing.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All those opposed? So with that, they've asked for a little more time at HG&E to then come back to us. Hopefully after DGNR meets and they've gathered up some more information. Counselor Bartley?
Oh, hi, hi, Todd, Mr. President. Can you, what did I say I was gonna do?
Oh, no, I, I thought, I, I thought Counselor Sullivan, Counselor Sullivan and I filed an order to go to DGNR to have a meeting. I was under the assumption that you were gonna be able to take it up, but if you can't, you can't. I apologize if that.
No, this, this committee, I'll tell you, we will take it up. We, we, we had short duty the other day, so they're, they're gonna stretch out and be ready. But what, what order do we, oh, right, thirty, thirty-nine?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll have, do you wanna just, we can suspend, take this up now, Todd, if you, if you and Mike are okay.
To suspend the rules, take it by thirty-nine?
Second.
The motion is to go out of order to thirty-nine. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, thirty-nine? I'll just read it quick. From Counselor Sullivan, Counselor McGee, that the HG&E, DPW, OCD, and the ConCon meet with DGNR to explore opportunities to combine resources and implement a program to move utilities underground at Valley Heights area. So that would be to send, receive and send to DGNR?
So, most.
All those.
President, is ConCon Verizon?
No, that's Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
Well, what do we want Verizon there also because they own the Southern Falls?
And, and a copy to Verizon.
So motion to amend to copy to Verizon?
Yep.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, adding Verizon in? Yeah, under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
So, uh, so the, the committee's gonna meet June fourteenth? And I don't see why we can't take it up. I mean, we've, it's, it'll be a pretty full agenda, but I don't see why we can't take it up that night. And, and if I may, Mr. President, if we need to meet one more time prior to the end of the, when, once the, oh, yeah, yeah, well, that's not gonna happen. Okay, well, 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 because our, our last meeting is June fifteenth for a regular meeting, so. Okay, well, we'll, we'll take it up June fourteenth. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Counselor Grady.
Could you add me to that order, please?
Yeah.
If it's, if it's okay with the rest of the people?
Fine.
Yep, yep, that's fine. Adding Counselor Grady. So this, we amended, added Verizon, adding Counselor Grady. Motion is to receive and rescind to DGNR. All those in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Back to item three, which is the public hearing. Motion would be to continue the public hearing to June fifteenth.
We have to continue the public hearing to June fifteenth at seven o'clock.
At seven o'clock. Someone had a question. I, I didn't get to see it because I was writing. Counselor Murphy, there we go.
Do we, I mean, since we opened a public hearing, do we not have to see if there's public comment that wants to be made?
You can, you can ask if you want public comment, we can.
Yeah, I'm, we opened a hearing. I'm not sure if anybody came here to provide comment on that. And I think we ought to give them the opportunity, even though they now know that we're trying to find a different solution.
Yep, so is there anyone here for item three, which would be the Valley Heights area and the new poles? Is there anyone here, Jeffrey, for that?
There are a couple of hands up. Dennis Sanchez.
Let me go to their, Dennis Sanchez being the first. Is Dennis here?
Yeah, it just takes a second for him to get his head over.
Dennis is on mute?
Sorry, yes.
No, no problem.
No, I, I was just here. It's, um, that, um, thank you for, um, the updates. Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. And it's, um, thank you for the.
Name and address, please.
Ha.
Dennis.
Uh, excuse me?
Name and address for the record, that's all.
Dennis Sanchez, sixteen Valley Heights Street. I've been following this and, uh, I just wanna say thank you. The updates, uh, sound promising and, uh, definitely I'll see you guys on, uh, June fifteenth. And I know you guys got work to do right now, so, uh, just thank you very much. Right now.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Next, next I see Josh Knox. Josh, you're on mute.
Everybody, good evening. Josh Knox, forty Morgan Street. Just clarifying question, uh, why is this particular process different in this neighborhood than anywhere else in the city? Uh, I think I understand that the residents are gonna be funding, putting this underground. Uh, I assume everyone in the city wants their utilities underground. Just, uh, curious why this process is any different, just from an equity standpoint?
They're, they're looking to move.
Hearing, we can't really get into a debate.
Yeah, it's, uh, it, it more, it's just to move the poles, Josh. That's kinda what this is, the petition is for, moving poles. Whether it's the backyard or the front yard.
If, if I may, Mr. President, wasn't there an issue of putting the utilities underground?
That is, that is an option that HG&E brought up at, as a potential option.
Okay, well, my comment then is, um, I, I hope that HG&E would provide that as an option for residents in all parts of the city.
Okay. I know they're on tonight. Is there anyone further? I don't see any hands. I don't hear anyone. So back to the motion, which was to table and continue the public hearing to June fifteenth at seven o'clock.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Alright, public comment is next. Is there anyone here for public comment? Let me get back to participants. Give me one second.
Mr. President, I think we should, uh, let folks know that if they wanna speak, they should raise their hand. Um, that the raise hand feature can be found at the bottom of the screen and that you'll call on them. Uh, name and address will be required for the record.
Yep, so if, and I, I see three hands so far. Uh, if you're looking to do public comment, I'll go right down the list as I see it on the screen. If you want to, go to the bot, and for me, it's different for all computers, but if you go to the bottom of the screen, it'll say participants, uh, of which in there you can, uh, hit hand raise. I'll say it right there on the side. Uh, raise your hand, I'll call on you. As a reminder, please state your name, your address. And for public comment, it is a minute and a half for the first ten people. If you're from outside of Hoyoke, we can suspend the rules to allow outside parties to speak. At about the minute mark, I will give you just kind of a friendly reminder. I'm not here to interrupt you, but just to let you know you're at the minute mark and you're getting close to the end. With that, uh, the first person on the list is Spencer Fox Peterson.
Good evening. Uh, my name, my name is Spencer Fox Peterson, fifty-one Portland Street. Behind the hospital. Uh, so I'm here for, uh, it's obviously a complicated topic. Uh, it's about policing in general. Uh, but something very specific happened last week that I need to bring attention to, um, the constituents and your council. So last week, they made a social media post, Captain Moriarty, regarding a young child that had been, uh, in a car with two, or three, two adults, a man and a woman, unconscious. Uh, regardless, they made a post featuring the young girl playing in the car and made, made a subsequent caption that said, uh, to the effect, uh, this has been a tou, this is a tough hand for this young one, but we did what we could today. It's a super insensitive and traumatic situation that this child is in. This shouldn't be used as a prop. Now that I only have a minute and a half, I think this conversation is a lot more complicated. And long story short, I, I would like, the, the, I got the post taken down. I, I think other people called too, but, um, what are we gonna do in general about ethics and policing? And what are we doing to work towards abolition? You know, we wanna have a good community to live in where we don't need law enforcement. We all know criminal coding is super complicated and it really dispersely, uh, affects people. But then there's also this propaganda side. I have a background in communications and studying media in the modern world from the nineteen hundreds to now, and I don't do it as a profession, but I do have pride in having some knowledge and, uh, I think this was a major ethics breach and it, it, it's not a one-time thing, but this one was very egregious. So this needs to be brought up and, uh, dealt with and it's, uh, gonna be an ongoing thing. So I'll be back, but thank you for having me. I very much appreciate everybody's time. I understand this is a sensitive topic, but we, you know, we can make this community better.
Well, we, thank, thank you for that. Uh, we can always, you can always reach out to a counselor to file an order to have this brought into a committee like Public Safety, Public Service. That way we can really get into the issue. For anybody, public comment, it's a tough one, the way they, the rules were designed to allow people to, to get a chance to speak, especially if there's a lot, you know, plus there's stuff on the agenda. But we always can take this stuff up in a committee and further vet these type of issues. So please don't feel like that you only got a minute and a half. I've heard people say it before. I only got a minute and a half.
No, 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 no.
It's the way it is, so.
I meant more as an introduction to myself as a community. I've been here for a while, but this is the first time I've spoke in public. So, and I understand this is a really complicated issue. Um, this happened just five days ago. So I've already been in touch with Juan, uh, he's my councilman, uh, over on Portland Street, so the ball is rolling in that department, but, uh, you know, I, I felt that there was no, um, admission or some sort of acknowledgement of what had happened. It was just deleted, which I'm happy for because, you know, this poor child and just everybody involved, that's a traumatic thing for me to see, having foster kids in my, my family. You know, my sister is fostering one child and has fostered and adopted his older brother. She just got called a week ago because of a similar situation like this. So to me, this is triggers so many different levels of my life and not only as a constituent and someone who pays for this, but personally, it's like this kid is going through something traumatic that shouldn't happen, but it points to a larger culture issue. So, long story short, I understand that the rules are the rules. I just felt that the community needed to know about this as soon as possible. And I would like, you know, the police department and Captain Moriarty specifically to address it, but that's up to them, that, you know, between, that's between them and God. That's the way I see it, so. Long story short, you'll be seeing more of me, but hopefully it's not only on negative things and, uh, me and my wife really enjoy living in Hoyoke, so thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Next, we, you too. Next, we have Price Armstrong. Price, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Good evening, yes.
Sorry, that was kind of a jolting, uh, change-up. Um, yeah, so.
Price, just na, name and address.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Uh, Price Armstrong at fifty-seven Park Slope. So, um, I, I'll be quick. Uh, first, just thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I'm mostly here to just listen, um, but I did want to address the, uh, rescinded executive order and specifically the topic of racism as a public health crisis. So the American Public Health Association, as well as the Public Health Institute of Western Massachusetts that's here uh, at the local level, have both publicly and unambiguously stated racism is a public health crisis. COVID nineteen has laid bare this reality, uh, substandard housing, segregated neighborhoods, inadequate access to healthcare. These are just to the, a few of the many factors which have resulted in black and Latino Americans being twice, it's two times as likely to die from COVID nineteen as white Americans. And that's according to the Centers for Disease Control. Uh, black and Latino Americans also suffer from higher asthma rates, heart disease, diabetes, and other chronic conditions, uh, compared to white Americans. Um, so I, I sincerely hope that we can send a message to all of Hoyoke's residents and especially people of color, uh, here in Hoyoke, that we care about their health and well-being and affirmatively state what the public health experts have unequivocally stated.
Right, say that one minute, just that one minute.
Racism is a public health crisis. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Alright, so, thank, thank you very much. Next, I have Owen Broadhurst.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, good evening, Owen.
Owen Broadhurst, thirteen twenty-eight North Hampton Street. We have a holiday upcoming in less than three weeks. That holiday has a name. The name of that holiday is Juneteenth. Naming it is an act of respect and courtesy towards those who suffered and died achieving it. Respecting courtesy that they were denied. Respecting courtesy that we were denied in the unilateral abrogation of a measure that is intended to challenge white supremacy. Respecting courtesy that we were denied and a failure to consult the community regarding how to best implement it, never mind its abrogation. The unilateral abrogation measure could not even name the holiday. Couldn't be bothered. There's a message in that. Three weeks from the holiday, there's a message in that. The anniversary date of the white supremacists lynching a George Floyd. There's a message in that. Intended or not, it sent a message. Deciding for unilateral abrogation rather than endeavoring to seek its actual implementation. There's a message in that. One of the messages was that they could not even be the least bit bothered trying. I can well understand an interim mayor hoping to, hoping for his tenure to be remembered. Why would anyone want his tenure to be remembered for this? Have a good night.
Wait, alright. Next on the list, we have Paul Heirey.
Good evening, everyone. Paul Heirey Dirmuth, uh, thirty-seven Longfellow Road in Hoyoke. Happy to see many of you with whom I've worked, uh, and been connected in many ways, um, over the years and, um, I just wanna add my voice to say I think it's incumbent upon all of us, um, in Hoyoke to really own and engage, um, the degree to which racism has had and continues to have an impact on our institutions and on people of color who live in Hoyoke and beyond. And I also, just like several other folks who have spoken, um, just deeply believe there is no need to rescind, um, an executive order that in many ways is so simple as to say we have ongoing work to deal with and address structural racism in our city and in our country. That's what that executive order says. Um, uh, I don't think it's a particularly, um, complex matter and, um, I agree that, um, I don't understand why this is something that the acting mayor would want to be remembered for um, during his tenure in leadership in our city. I look forward to working with you and as part of your community, um, as we go forward. And I deeply believe we, and particularly those of us who are white in this conversation, have a moral responsibility to own the reality of working to undo racism. It's not just the work of people of color. It very much needs to be all of our work. Um, so this is an opportunity to stand up for what's right and, um, I hope that uh, the city councilors will in fact go on record, um, uh, in opposition to the rescission of this executive order. Thank you. Wish you the best. Again, look, look forward to, um, being part of this community together as we move forward.
Thank you. Next is JR.
Good evening, can you hear us?
Yep, good evening. Um, I live on two Laurel Street. My name is John Rivera and I'll be timing myself, so no need to, uh, mind. Uh, so yeah, I'm, I'm here on the behalf of, uh, everybody else who's probably here today. Um, upon the, on the behalf of the executive order that was rescinded, um, by the acting mayor. Um, I'm gonna be as brutally honest as, as possible because I feel like, um, cutting corners or cutting shortcuts doesn't, um, doesn't achieve anything. That's what I'm learning from at least the city council. Um, this is a signal to white supremacy and if, uh, you can't possibly understand that, I don't know how else to get it across. I was raised here. Um, I went to Hoyoke High. I went to Marie St. Donahue. And, you know, going to Hoyoke High as a Boriqua that understands English, right? That's, that, it's a very, it, it puts you ahead and it also, it's an experience in and of itself. Um, the kids call each other lingies. This is a slur that's commonly used in our high schools. It's deep-rooted. I see this slur being exchanged all throughout the years of, of, um, you know, whether freshman, senior, or whatever it may be. It doesn't leave the high schools. It's constantly being used. And this is just a small little glimpse as to what racism, uh, looks like in our communities here in Hoyoke. Uh, we were redlined. And if, for those that don't know what redlining is, I urge you to look it up. For those that don't wanna learn, I don't know what else to come across, like, this was a very tone-deaf, um, rescindence. And this also portrays the communication.
You know, you're a little over a minute. That's all.
I'll, I'll finish up. This, this portrays the communication and it needs to be communicated that we can't do this. We need to do more. That's all.
Uh, and thank you. And once again, for anyone who's calling in on public comment, it, I'm just giving you the heads up as to where we stand. We're not trying to stop anyone from speaking. It's just, that's what's in our rules. If it's something that wants to be vetted more, we can always take these things up in committee and, and open it up for a deep discussion and not try and cut you off at the minute and a half. Just want everyone to understand that. Next is Dade Scolard, Scolardi? Hopefully I didn't butcher that. I apologize if I did.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, again, good evening.
Good evening. Um, I am Dade Scolardi. I live at seventy-five Hitchcock Street. Um, thank you for this time. I'm gonna be brief. I don't have anything prepared. I'm just gonna speak off the cuff here. But I'm speaking against, um, Acting Mayor Murphy's, um, rescinding of the executive order declaring that racism, um, and police violence are matters of public health. Um, you know, when I think about this, I think about Hoyoke and I think about the decade, the past decade I've lived here and the many interactions I've had with folks, both on the left, the right, and the center. And I do truly believe that all of us come from a place where we want what's best for Hoyoke. We love our city. As a transplant, I love Hoyoke. And so until proven otherwise, I like to believe that we all are coming from a place of sincerity. What I wanna say is that it is important to think about whom is impacted before decisions are made. Um, making, you know, rescinding this order, um, the first line of the executive order states that, you know, resenting, rescinding the executive order of declaring racism and police violence as matters of public health. Sure, there are all those other things after that, but people are going to just hear as they should that first sentence. Um, and it is a public, racism is a public health issue. Hampton County ranks last in COVID vaccinations. Um, twenty-eight percent of Hoyoke as of two weeks ago has been vaccinated. Um, there is a twenty percent vaccination rate for BIPOC folks in the city compared to a forty percent vaccination rate for white folks. And in a city where almost sixty percent of the population are BIPOC folks, I really want you to consider the way institutional and systemic racism.
Just a heads up, little over a minute.
Impacts access to vaccinations and to other public health measures. And as far as the things that weren't acted on, last year we were in the middle of a pandemic. Um, groups had a hard time meeting and organizing. And so of course, things weren't going to progress. I just felt that this action was just, um, poorly decided upon and I've listened to Acting Mayor Murphy's, um, comments after the fact.
Let, let you know we're over, over the time. So just if you have a few seconds.
Um, I listened to Mayor Murphy's comments after the fact. Um, and like I said, I believe, um, that you do feel sorry. Um, but next time, just really think about the greater impact of actions and words. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, I have Erin Callahan.
Hi.
Hi, good evening.
Um, my name is Erin Callahan. I live at sixty. Av, um, so I was on the committee that was created by the executive order, um, that was rescinded. And I, I agree with what everybody is saying in terms of racism being an important issue and, um, a public health emergency and all of that. I think it's a little unfair to the acting mayor to not acknowledge that the executive order, as it was written, sort of ended up just being a gesture because there was very little follow-through with what was in it. And I think that if there's a willingness to write an executive order, that would be effective. I think that it would have been smart to maybe do that before you rescinded the other one. Um, but I don't think that's a bad idea. I also don't like how this issue sort of deflects from the fact that the people who have the power to do what needs to be done to change this in our city is you guys. So whatever an acting mayor does or does not submit as a proclamation, a lot of the things that we were working on only change if the city council gets on board. So I'd much rather be listening to public comment about why we're not doing the report on the Hoyoke Police Department than talk about why somebody rescinded an order that wasn't being acted on to begin with. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sandy Ward.
Hello?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for the public, sorry. I'd like to, uh, second what Paul Heirey was saying. I can't.
Sandy, just, uh, the address, please.
Fifty-six Nonotuck Street in Hoyoke. Um, been here twenty-six years. I really, um, appreciate Paul's comments and I'm just another person speaking and saddened about the way this rescinding has happened. Um, I learned, I'm glad to hear from Erin and I do, would support that if we could move forward on dealing with what needs to be done. Um, I learned, I'm glad to hear from Erin and I do, would support that if we could move forward on dealing with what needs to be done. Never mind which orders are up or down. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Lynn Haran.
Grandma, why did I break the box?
Can you hear me?
Good evening, Lynn.
Yes.
Same way, just scramble, the way they work.
Okay, I'm sorry. For some reason, I'm not um, I'm not getting um, the photo image, the video image, but you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Lynn Haran. I live at one hundred Southampton Drive uh, Road in uh, Holyoke. I appreciate an opportunity to talk tonight. I too, uh, want to address the the subject respectfully. I asked uh, our acting mayor Murphy to rethink his rescinding of the former executive order a declaration of racism, police violence as matters of public health that constitute a public health emergency. Um, I'm kind of saddened in the way this happened as been said before because it certainly would have been and shown uh, great faith um, in his constituents had he addressed this this very uh, concerning issue to all the residents first before just strictly um, aborting this particular executive issue. Racism is indeed a health crisis. Um, I won't go into all the details and statistics that have already been uh, stated by others tonight. And certainly, we should all be aware of the impact um, of racism in the pandemic. But the pandemic is a magnifying glass for the inequity in issues that already existed. So we're a much deeper um, than just the pandemic in terms of the racism. And I have to say, it brings to mind in Holyoke in December of two thousand and sixteen, former counselor uh, Josie, Josie uh, Valentin brought up and tried a non-binding resolution that addressed the concerns we had as Donald Trump became our president and we began to see
Lynn, you're just over a minute. Just a heads up.
Okay, thank you. Um, and we were unable to uh, get very far then. And unfortunately, everything we warned against um, has come to be true. If you don't believe it can happen in Holyoke, as some of our counselors said back then, then I would ask you to talk to the people that lived in Charlottesville. I can pretty much guarantee you that they thought the same thing, many of their counselors as well. I know I lived in Charlottesville and we saw it happen. So I would hope that, uh, as the young woman had said, uh, sum up quickly too, that we go from here um, and try to create an executive order that does address systemic racism. The possibility of it, the actual existence of it in our society and the institutions of our city of Holyoke. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Sarah Davidow. I just, I just lost the hand. Did the hand knock? Did they drop off?
Uh, it, it just drops off when I transition.
Okay, I thought we lost him. Okay. It's on mute.
Oh, yep. All right. Sorry.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm also here for the same reason. Um, my name is Sarah Davidow. I live in South Hadley. I've worked in Holyoke on High Street for about fifteen years. I wrote you a letter, uh, Mayor Murphy, which she did respond to and, and you were encouraging people to meet with you. I think we'll probably take you up on that. But I wanted to be here because I wanted you to see how many people feel impacted by the rescindment of this particular order. Whatever other pieces we can say that the order itself wasn't strong enough, that it wasn't acted upon, the way that it was rescinded was hugely problematic. And if you want to see the impact highlighted of how it was removed, go to the Hello Holyoke Facebook page and look at some of the comments on the post where I posted the letter that we had sent you and see the kind of comments that are happening that were encouraged by this rescindment that are, are raising up. And it's not people who are neutral. It's people who don't understand how important this issue of racism is. It's people who are pushing back and saying it's not an issue. There, I would just encourage you, if you haven't already, to go look at that yourself. And I think the only thing that I really wanna highlight that I didn't already hear from other people who do live in Holyoke and have spoken before me is that not only did you not name Juneteenth, not only was the timing really poor and did not suggest any further stronger follow-up, but you also said, and then said in your response email to me again, that all diversity is welcome in Holyoke. And while that's a great message in general, in the context of this conversation about black and brown lives and systemic racism, it just keeps sounding like All Lives Matter. And All Lives Matter is such an incredibly harmful message when we're talking about systemic racism. People constantly misunderstand Black Lives Matter and other efforts to combat systemic racism as if
A little bit over a minute.
Against, against other people. It's not. It's saying this is an issue that deserves focus. This is an issue that is often ignored. This is an issue that when brought up, people are quick to say, let's talk about something else. Let's broaden the scope. Let's, let's blur what we're actually talking about. So we need to be talking about this. I wanna hear strong statements from you. I may not live in Holyoke, but I spend more time probably in Holyoke than where I do live because I'm there all the time, working with many of the marginalized communities that do live there. And they need to be hearing the leadership, whether interim or not, having a strong message that racism matters. That's not what came through in your letter and it has brought up all sorts of harmful conversations regardless of what the intent was. So I hope that you will very quickly come back with something much stronger and get rid of the All Lives Matter messaging. Thank you.
Mr. President, a- as a point of order, we need to suspend rules if people from outside of our city will be speaking. Thank you.
I mentioned that up in the beginning, but
We did not.
Yeah. Okay. So motion is if there's anyone else or further
Is there anyone else or?
There's a David, just let people know, there's a David T., Josh Knox, and then Elizabeth Ramirez.
Why don't we make motion to suspend the necessary rules so that anyone who wants to speak can speak?
Right. And it is going over, it's going, gonna go over the ten now. So motion be a spending rules to allow the rest to speak. And if they're from out of town, to allow.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Yeah, hold on, Council Vacan, Council Vacan has the floor. Yep.
To limit the time.
Important information, Counselor McGee. Um, we're not letting people uh, speak twice, are we?
Nope, no, they, no. Okay, so David T., you're up next. Name, name and address, please.
Yep, David Tabor, uh, one fifty-six Suffolk Street. Uh, I, there's like a, a really small outside chance, like a, maybe a like, two percent chance that I'm here to, not to bury our acting mayor, but to uh, to praise him. If uh, sir, if your goal was to uh, to spark a conversation about a uh, an executive order that pretty much everyone had forgotten about. Uh, because it's, you know, rhetorical strength was matched by the complete lack of uh, concrete action uh, that followed it over the past year. Um, so that conversation is happening, which is really exciting, especially uh, heading into uh, an election season. Um, I'm really, really looking forward to hearing from everyone who is running for any public office in Holyoke this year about their uh, their position on whether they uh, plan to support reinstating the order and uh, um, actually supporting uh, action that uh, understands the public health crisis that racism represents. So it's gonna be an exciting summer. Uh, looking forward to it and encourage everyone to keep the pressure up. Uh, especially after July fourth. Great. Thanks very much.
Alright. Thank you, David. Next is Elizabeth Ramirez.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth, Elizabeth Credy Ramirez and I live at two oh five Bemis Road. And um, I am um, speaking today about uh, rescinding of the order of racism being a threat to public health and safety. Um, I read the explanation or I listened to the Holyoke Media piece um, about um, Acting Mayor Murphy's explanation. I was confused because he, he made it sound that he was interested in um, strengthening the different pieces of the order. But that's not what the effect was. The ripples went throughout Holyoke. People were very angry. They saw it as a hostile, aggressive, racist piece of policy. Um, and I'm not sure that that's what you meant, but that's definitely how it was received. Um, and I'm not sure why you didn't decide to strengthen what was in it instead of canceling it. I do agree that um, maybe there was a little bit of fluff involved with the order, but I was also on the policing uh, committee and we did a lot of work for a year. So I wouldn't say nothing happened. We met for a whole year. And it was hard and exhausting and we found out a lot and we found out a lot of questions. And then it was rescinded. So that was really frustrating to me as a member of that committee that we weren't even reached out to. Um, so it basically ended up being this very symbolic, negative um, rescinding which had terrible timing. And it's, I feel like it's really ripped Holyoke Committee part, um, which we did not need.
Just letting you know, a little over a minute. Just a heads up.
Um, so I hope that you will consider your uh, your rescindment, if that's a word. And um, sh- uh, work to strengthen the pieces of uh, the order instead of just um, going away with it. I wish there had been a replacement before you had rescinded it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Josh Knox is next.
Counselor McGee, I thought, what, what did you say previously about speaking twice?
Well, Josh is doing, he, he was here for the telephone poll. He was not here for public comment yet. So this is the first time for public comment.
Fair enough.
Good evening. I'll start as I always do by thanking all of you for your public service. I know firsthand how much work you all put into keeping our city running and I appreciate it. My comments are also tonight to address the major executive order by the acting mayor to rescind Mayor Morris's order declaring racism and police violence to be public health concerns. Uh, and pushing to create a citizens advisory police committee. First, making this order on the one-year anniversary of the murder of George Floyd is at best unfortunate. Even if Mayor Morse's order was just a gesture, as Erin Callahan suggests, I wonder what sort of gesture making this rescission on the twenty-sixth was supposed to make. Uh, from the Republican reporting, I understand that the stated reasons for rescinding the order were twofold, that it wasn't acted upon and that the advisory committee had no immediate benefit. I respectfully encourage the mayor to withdraw his rescission and to instead move forward with actions to implement the order and to reinstate the advisory committee in order to work on undoing systemic racism in the city. Uh, this rescinding is a form of white supremacy uh, because it's diminishing the lived experience of non-white folks at the hands of police officers. I'm white. I've never felt my life threatened by a police officer or felt disrespected or de- humanized in my interactions with police officers. My black and brown friends tell me that they do. And their experiences
Josh, just a little over a minute. Just heads up.
Thank you. Finally, I agree with Erin Callahan and Elizabeth Ramirez um, of the advisory committee, that we need action on these issues and speak in support of the order originally filed by counselors Lisi, LeBron Martinez, and Anderson Burgos, that we need an independent assessment of Holyoke Police Department's structure, policies, and practices. I hope the council can move forward with making that a reality and on addressing systemic racism in our city. Uh, to promote belonging, inclusion, and equity for us all. Uh, thank you for the time tonight to uh, work together to make our city even better.
Thank you. Next I have Coc- Cocaine Givener.
Counselor McGee, uh, I, I believe Hel- Helene Busby had her hand up first, but it was dropped when she was transitioned in.
Oh, okay. So thank you, Jeffrey. Helene Busby. Sorry, you, you're next.
Okay. Sorry. Um, my name's Helene Busby. Um, I live at ninety Brookline Avenue in Holyoke. And people have said some really um, incredible things in terms of um, the impact of the rescission of the order. And I I don't wanna
Now, just so everyone mute uh, to allow the person to speak, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go, go ahead.
Um, and so I, I just, I really appreciate the, the comments. Um, they've been incredibly thoughtful and, and I agree with them in terms of raising the issues and um, coming up with a constructive way to move forward after what's really like a debacle and really just a shameful, shameful thing, I think. Um, and I just wanna be on the record as saying that I, you know, I don't uh, support the rescission. And I appreciate people from outside of Holyoke also contributing to this conversation because we are in a community. And um, and so I think, you know, people who have taken the time and um, and contributed. Um, I'm a parent of a small child who goes to school in the Holyoke Public Schools and I just, you know, this is a very terrible message to have sent to um, to all the children who my child goes to school with. Um, and so I really just wanna be on the record. Um, I don't wanna say everything that's been said before. Um, but appreciate the time to give this input.
Thank, thank you very much. Um, Jeffrey, is Cocaine Givener next? So I don't skip someone or?
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes, good evening.
Hi. Um, so my name's Cocaine Givener. I live at thirteen O'Connor Avenue. And I was just doing my hair, so sorry while I was listening in. Um, I just wanted to and, and also um, place my support. Um, I'm obviously a person of color, maybe not that obvious because it's coming out of winter. But I am a mixed being and I live in Holyoke and systematic racism is real. And it's definitely a public health crisis. So I just wanted to go on the record for um, stating that and supporting that. I don't think rescinding the um, the executive order was the only way to deal with it if it wasn't quite right. Um, I was also on that policing committee that didn't really gain as much momentum as we would have liked, although we did do a lot of work. Um, but I do think it's important to revisit some kind of solution to the systematic racist issues in Holyoke through policing and through our different departments. Um, because it doesn't seem like people or all people here realize that it's a real problem. So I'm happy to see so many people coming and, and saying their part. And I do appreciate the council and of course, um, Council Murphy for sitting in as our acting mayor because I have had some, a few interactions with you and they have not been bad at all. So, but I did wanna um, voice my opinion about this and say, you know, it's definitely worth revisiting and making, making it better, not just getting rid of the um, the order. So thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Vanessa Martinez.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Um, my name is Vanessa Martinez. Um, I live at thirty-eight Edbert Drive in Holyoke. I also was part of the um, Mayor's Advisory Committee on Policing and Racial Justice. Um, and as several of my um, committee members also stated, um, the work we did was uh, quite intensive. You know, we met for about three months on a weekly basis. Um, we also met for another, you know, several months um, on a, um, at least two, twice a month. Um, and while it didn't gain momentum, a lot of ideas, a lot of potential recommendations. Um, several of us attended a transformative justice on leasing event and were excited to bring that back to Mayor Morse. Um, unfortunately, I think uh, you know, due to things that were going on for him, he was unable to really move forward um, some of his original plans. Um, so my goal is never Um, some of his original plans. Um, so my goal is never, you know, I, I.
Let you know it's a little over time, but you can keep going.
Like Dade mentioned, I tend to assume goodwill until someone proves me otherwise. I do think it was short sighted. Um, I do look forward to meeting with Acting Mayor Murphy. Um, in the very near future to discuss this further. So I just wanted to say that. I, I do agree with, um. Taking back the action, um, but I look forward to talking about possibly. Creating something stronger and better. Thank you.
Thank you. Just looking.
Might want to just reacknowledge how people can get recognized.
So I don't see any other hands, however, once again, once again, every computer is different. If you go back down to the bottom of the screen, you'll see. A window pop up. It says raise hand. You hit that button. You can raise your hand to do public comment.
And if they're on phone, they can hit star nine.
Uh, and if you're on phone, you're not on by computer, hit star nine and just let us know you're here. I don't hear anyone. Counselor Lisi.
I have my ra- I have my hand raised up. I'm sorry, but can you see it? I'm just trying to make sure you're seeing it. Okay?
N- I didn't see it, Counselor LeBron Martinez, but did you have a question first?
No, I, I like to, I like to make a comment.
Well, okay, let's first, let's do the public comment. Make sure we allow everyone in the public the ability to speak. If there's not, then we'll go to the counselors to, to go from there. Is there anyone else for public comment? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the counselors. That would be Counselor LeBron Martinez. So public comment removed away from, because I, I do believe we got everybody. Counselor Bartley.
Just what, what, what part of the agenda are we on right now? When, when we go to counselors speaking?
Well, nothing. We're, we're trying to finish public comment first.
Right, so. So I, I, I don't know what part of the agenda it's on where, where counselors get to pitch in their two cents on this matter or whatever matter.
We don't, I don't know if they're pitching in. All I know is there might be a question on something.
But there, there's not on the agenda. You're, this is open meeting law stuff now.
But once again, all I'm trying to do is first get through public comment, which I think we are now done. Next we'll go to communications if people have questions on something. That's what we're going to do.
With the agenda. Thank you.
But that's what we're doing. Counselor McGivern, did you say something or? Yeah, mute or?
Not sure what I'm on.
Oh, there it is. We can hear you.
Um, I'm not just, I, I thought we were going to item number four.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna to, yeah, item four, but first Counselor Martinez, did you have a question?
Actually, it's not a question, but it seems like I'm going to be, uh, not allowed to speak on what I will feel that I need to do so. Um, this in, in, I'm hoping that we as a.
I think this will go, if you have a comment on what was being talked about in public comment, that'll come up in item four. Just to let you know, we're going in order here. I just gotta stay on the agenda. Counselor Lisi, do you have a question?
I'll ask my question this way. I, I believe that. Counselors have had points of personal privilege made where they could enter comment during public comment period.
Yeah, we, we try to answer questions in public comment, but then go to the order that might be or will be. Spoken on because in order to speak in public comment, it has to be on the agenda.
Right.
Which would be item four, I do believe is what people are going to talk about. Counselor.
To suspend the necessary rules and take up item number four for discussion.
Yeah, we're going to four right now. This is communications, which is item four. Which is the executive order from Mayor Murphy. Executive order rescinding the executive order from June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. So that is on the table. There's a question, Counselor Lisi, or you have a comment on that, on that communication?
No, I'll wait my turn. I want to hear the discussion and then I'll make my comment.
Hand, your hands up, Counselor Hernandez, your hand is next.
Oh, no, I'm gonna do the same and then I believe that Counselor LeBron was up first.
Counselor LeBron Martinez, Beck.
So let me, let me, um, get, take this opportunity. I don't think I'm probably one of the least. Um, or the least people ever speaking at this and I hope that my colleagues allow me to share. What is been said to me by the people of color Latinos and those who have called me. And I'm quite sure many of us have been called on this. Um, I want to first and foremost thank the people who've come and had the courage to come forward. Those who was on the committee who worked hard to make this happen. I'm sitting here appalled because those who probably know not much of my history and why I'm here in the city of Holyoke. Came to work in projects of public health, which I was just reminded for my birthday. Someone. Pulled up an article and sent it to me. In regards to the infant mortality issues that were happening in our city, teen pregnancy and all above, I mean. That contributed to institutional racism. It's, it's an ism of many other, um, factors. That we're facing for years. And it has open wounds for my own self, my family, my children who were raised in the city of Holyoke and the struggles and we had to. Try to be accepted and fit in and among many issues that we had to face in the, um. Institutional racism. Just to share a little bit also why I ran for school board, the circumstances that my family faced. My children, uh, siblings, even in our school system. Because this is lacking in every way, not only within the police, uh, it was brought as a public health issue, but this. Public health issues has been affecting us in many other places. Especially that we should be having curriculums that right now is call, uh, is covering these issues. When you walk, even me that I worked in, uh, opportunities where I was able to work. Students right into cafeterias and the children, my children, my Latino children. Would show me, put me out, look at how we, we as students, you could see with the vibe. That are Latino children of colors and childrens on this side and York or the group of, um, Caucasian or white kids on the other side. This is the elephant in the room and it's a topic that nobody ever wants to touch. It's tough to talk about because people get offended and whatnot. Imagine both who have gone through it, that we had to live it and some of them has come to be accustomed or. Uh, uh, believe that it's okay. And if we cannot, as a co- as a city council. And as a community began to touch the subject, no matter how hurtful it is, every time this subject comes up. I'm choking up because I want to cry because I don't want my grandkids, listen, I may not see them, but I don't want them to struggle. With the issues that I had to face and become the advocate for my childrens to fit in, to feel that they were part of something that. They were not accepted for the reasons. And this is a public health issues as a whole. It's, it's across the border, whatever, how well you want, you want to see it. And it's not a health related, it's a public health, how it affects people. There's people who have, who have, um. Dropped out of school for feeling it. There's people who have, uh, come into depression. There's people who are from this suicide or whatever isn't. But they faced and I want us to take that, even if for my last six months that I'm here. To share the last emotions that I have faced. Even sitting among my colleagues that I was hoping that, you know, we can embrace times to take this cultural. Um, uh, cultural sensitivity, even racism. I remember we had a, 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 uh, a, a blurb of it. Several years ago where we had all participate because it was a, like a requirement mandated, yet we are mandated by the state to take. A sexual harassment training, but not yet a racism to actually undergo and represent the people. That are not being supported or represented in this matter. I just want to say that. Although I'd be, be stepping down, I think there's a lot of work to do and this is where I'm going to invest my time out of my. My role that it will not be at a city council, but as a community activist and organizer that I'm going to come back to. Because it's necessary and it's, 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 it's rehashing. Uh, a lot of past history and in, you know, and internal, internal things that we have internalized. And, and cannot continue to happen. Many of, many other, uh, races have come through. They faced that, but they were able to survive. Sometimes people of color is very hard to come through. Their skin doesn't help us. There's other things. I'm proud of the color. I'm proud of all, but the undoing this own racism issue. It, it's a whole community responsibility. It is not only the parents in our household. Teaching our kids how to survive that. It has to be all of us. And I want to just say thank you for giving me the opportunity to at least speak out and sharing my feelings. Because it is something that needs to be addressed in the city. Thank you.
Next was, I know Counselor Lisi and Counselor Hernandez, you had your hands up.
Uh, I'll go next.
Your counsel, Lisi.
Um, thanks. Um, so let me start by saying that over the past few years in which Acting Mayor Murphy has been on the city council as the ward two representative. I've had the chance to work closely with him, um, especially as a member of the ordinance committee. And I've gotten to know, uh, Counselor Murphy very well. Um, I find Terry Murphy to be a nice guy and a decent man. And I have seen him work to make the city more inclusive. But being a good guy does nothing to address the institutional nature of racism and all the previous speakers who were here to lend their voice. Um, have spoken to the nature of, of the issue in that way. Um, I know that these are very difficult, difficult conversations to have. Um, I know this because I have an advanced degree in political science with a concentration in race and ethnicity in politics. And even with that advanced degree, I find conversations about race and racism in the community to be very difficult. Um, what I want to point out is that, um. Acting Mayor Murphy's actions in rescinding the executive order to declare racism and police violence a matter of public health. Uh, emergency. Uh, it really, really rolls back an important step forward that our community took last year. Uh, and now the community is here looking for accountability. At best, Mayor Murphy's actions speak to the white privilege that prevents him from realizing the tone deafness of rescinding this executive order. On the one year anniversary of George Floyd's murder. At worst, his actions highlight the problems that white Americans must face related to their colorblind understanding of racially equality.
Okay, Counselor Lisi, I'm just gonna say one thing per, per our rules, let's not use the name of the counselors. It, it's just the way we have the rules set up. So if we're going to talk about the order, that is fine, but we can't call out the names. That, that's all. I'm just going to go let you know that. That's all. So sorry to interrupt.
The, the war two counselor. So at worst, the executive order. The rescission of the executive order highlights the problems that white Americans must face related to their colorblind understanding of racially equality. Viewing the concept of racial equality through a lens of colorblindness supposes that the noble but vague ideas of respect. And dignity are sufficient to overcome racism. This colorblind lens has been the dominant way of looking at race and racism since the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. But a new generation of color consciousness has arrived. This is a generation that is willing to declare Black Lives Matter. White people are assumed to have good intentions and get the benefit of the doubt when mistakes are made. But in similar cases for people of color, the result is often blame, burdens and bias. We have seen this plainly over the course of the past year as the COVID nineteen pandemic has highlighted the systemic racism. That led to uneven health outcomes and disproportionately high rates of infection, hospitalization and death among racial and ethnic minorities. These problems are systems based and cannot be solved by only being nicer to one another. No amount of kindness can change the fact that the lower educational attainment achieved by communities of color. Um, leave, uh, essential workers overrepresented with black and brown bodies. And those were the individuals who faced the greatest risk of exposure to the virus over the past year. No amount of respect can undo the legacy of slavery or the red line housing policies that have robbed families of color of opportunities. To turn their labor into wealth. Instead, people of color, uh, black and brown bodies often live in denser. Housing conditions than white people and those housing conditions are often substandard. Which had helped to proliferate the spread of COVID nineteen in their communities. There's no amount of respect that can undo the general, generational effects of stress and trauma that are responsible for the heightened. Higher incidence of comorbidities carried by black and brown bodies. These are higher rates of diabetes. Um, higher rates of hypertension, uh, heart disease, et cetera, that contributed to the higher mortality rates. Among those infected by the virus. What this means is that anti-black bias cannot be confronted with. Kindness alone and that it necessitates policy changes. And this is why the rescission of the previous executive order is a huge step backwards and has deleterious effects for our community. Moving forward requires concrete and tractable policy changes. Um, to reiterate and in unison with those who participated in tonight's public speak out, um, the city needs. Um, that executive order to rescind the prior executive order to declare racism. And police violence a public health emergency, we need this rescission withdrawn. We need to reconvene the commission on policing and activate it, strengthen it so that it can be more productive moving forward. And we need the city council to adopt and fund the order to do an independent assessment of the Holyoke Police Department's structure, policies. And practices. These are the policy interventions and steps that we need to move forward on. And I look forward to working with you all on these important issues. Thank you.
Counselor Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, um. I just want to add, um, it's a very, um. Very sad day for our community. When the ward two counselor, because we can't say any names, acting mayor, um. Decided to rescind this order that was bigger than. I mean, it was bigger than the reasons that he provided to rescind it. Stating that our community is a great community that welcomes diversity and that. There's no issues here of racism and that's not true. I had an outcry and outpour of constituents of my ward, mainly Spanish speaking only. Reach out to me and asked me, why would this ever happen? When we felt like finally we were moving steps forward. And feeling welcomed and seeing like a light at the end. Um, and where movements. arising from, from unfortunate things such as the death of George Floyd. Which racism has always existed, but now is being filmed and now is being exposed. And our children are seeing it and now when finally. We felt like this community was moving forward and making a change and, and having a balance. Then here comes this that, oh, there's no issues in this community. Let's move forward and just taking this out. That was not welcome. People of color have been shortchanged for generations. And this issue needs to be addressed, just like our dear counselor Gladys LeBron, she, um. Testifies during her, her comments, how her family, um, what they went through. How they felt that they didn't belong, how that's an impact on how. What stops us from reaching our, our, our maximum potential in life. And that is something that is, it's very sad. And that is where our community of color is facing here. And when I decided to run for city counselor. I did it because I'm invested in this community, but also to be the voice for those that are underrepresented. And I, and I hope that the war. And I, and I hope that the Ward Two Counselor. Really rethinks this and that this, what he did, he can undo. And we can move forward in making sure that we build communities for the future generations. In which everyone is gonna have the opportunity to. Be someone and feel welcomed. Okay, because this community consists of more than fifty percent of Latinos. And we belong. So it's time. To do away with the empty smiles and to do something about. Leveling the playing field. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Lahey and Counsel Anderson Burgos.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, I enjoyed listening to all the speakers tonight, city councilors in, in the public as well. Um, it's something that um a conversation had started, um, and it's something that's very important. I think it's almost about a year ago, I think it was like June twenty-fourth, that the uh State House of Reps started in the process of making. Uh, June nineteenth, the state official holiday. Um, and I think that is um, a, a, a good thing. And I also think the fact that um, we're acknowledging that, you know, there was slavery. There was uh issues that have happened in the past, and it's a conversations that started. That are bringing the conversations that we're having tonight. Um, I think that um, you know, quite frankly, um, I haven't heard. From Counsel Murphy, so I'm not gonna uh piggyback in any of those conversations, but I, I do think that um. That that order shouldn't have been rescinded. And one of the reasons why is because Counselor, in his thoughts, Counselor, or I'm sorry, Mayor Morse, um. Hadn't followed through with it. I mean, quite frankly, we haven't seen Mayor Morse over a year. So there's a lot of different things that you could probably rescind if that was the issue, but I don't think this should be one of them. I think that we have to acknowledge uh people's past history and having a continuous conversation regarding that. It's very delicate, but it's very well needed. So um, if we take a vote, I'm, I'm not sure how this works, Todd, or Counsel President.
It, it just, any, what's before us, just let everyone know and everyone watching. All that's before us is the communication from the mayor uh with regards to his executive order. Nothing was filed by the City Council or anything. It's, it's just a communication from the mayor.
Okay, okay. Well, I just wanted to make it clear that I'm for the um, um, the proclamation or declaration. That Mayor Morse said um, had done. Um, I think it's a conversation that is well-needed, um, and will continue. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Anderson Burgos.
This is a. It's a very, very, very sensitive topic, and I'm sitting here. And I've listened to everyone speak, and I'm looking at all of you, and I, and I see some of, some of your expressions of frustrations. Confusion. But there's a lot of pain. And I, I did not, I guess I buried this for so many years, and I, I didn't wanna, I try not to talk about it. But when I was uh sixteen and my brother was seventeen in Holyoke. We were just being obnoxious, loud kids and. I remember the officers came up to us and immediately I froze. Because that's, as a Latino boy, that's what you're supposed to do. And I froze. And my brother, who I look up to. When the cop was addressing my brother. And yelling at him and belittling my brother, my brother says to the cop, he says. You wouldn't be saying that if you had that badge. That officer slapped my brother so hard in the face. That it struck a chord, like it struck a fear. In my very core, that every time I saw an officer, I froze. If I saw lights, I froze. If, so. I know that this was a long time ago, but these are effects that still affect me as a grown man today. Who knows? I do not break the law. I respect. I'm an honorable citizen. I pay my taxes. I do everything. That any civil right human being would do just to fit in. And I still have that fear. It still lives within me. And not too long ago, not too long ago, in front of this very, my very own house, in front of this house. An officer came here, not even a year ago. And I froze. He was looking for a family member of mine that temporarily stayed with me and then moved. Apparently, he got into an argument with another sibling in Chigaby. The Chigaby cops called the Holyoke cops with, which led that officer to my front steps. I approached the officer. When he approached me, I respected him and everything, and I gave him the answers that he asked. When I told him the answers, he didn't like them. I'm assuming because the way I was dressed. He started talking down to me, and I didn't even fight back. I didn't tell him I wasn't gonna throw him a counselor card. I shouldn't have to. I'm in front of my own home, doing nothing wrong. And this officer, because he thinks he has that badge. That he has the right to come to my house and question me. The way that he did, and when then I called the Chief of Police to express this to him. Yeah, he told me, you know what? That should have never happened. That's not how I, I train my officers. I said, yeah, well, I want an apology. Well, guess what? I've yet to see an apology. So when we talk about, this is a public health issue, it is. It's a mental and physical issue to a community who has been repressed, pushed down, and strangled. And kept to the floor long enough. These are things that we need to address. They're never gonna go away. If we don't address them today, they're not gonna go away. If we stay shut, they're not gonna go away. What we need to do is come together. I trust this body. I trust the people that make up this body. I just did something extremely hard, and I said things that I've buried for so many years. I wouldn't have done that unless I know that something good would come out of it. And I pray to God that I hope something good comes out of this. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I've been listening carefully to all the different comments that folks have made. And I have worked with a number of the people on the council now for longer than I ever thought that I would. Um, I only wanna say two things. I think that our acting mayor is um acting with good intentions. And I don't think that the steps he took were intending to harm or hurt anyone. Or to dismiss the issues that we are all aware of, that we have within the city. Um, particularly as it relates to our education system. I do think that we have things in process. And that we can put any number of other things into our orders and into our committees. To move any number of initiatives forward. Um, and I think that any counselor and any constituents that are talking with their board rep. Um, are well-served when we use those paths. The problem that happens with executive orders, as we've all seen, is they come and go. When the writer comes and goes. The thing that will lead to lasting change and developments within the city. Are the ones that go through the messy process of coming into the council. Going into committee, um, engaging in uncomfortable debate. Uh, where people, I think, um. First have to be willing, and I would say um, the matters of respect and kindness are paramount. Um, to being able to even have a conversation that is absolutely mandatory. For anything to move forward. So I think it would be more helpful for those we serve, for us to move forward on initiatives. To help for actions to take place to address concrete matters. And um, less politicking relative to the council. And the mayor's races that are taking place this year. I really think our public is best served when we focus on the issues and use our committee's structure. And have very open and transparent process, and I hope that we all do that. And I'll do my best to try to be a constructive participant. Thank you.
My mute was stuck. Uh, anyone further?
Mr. President.
Counsel Graney.
Yeah, I've listened very carefully to, to all the speakers. And I would like, you know, when we proceed with these discussions to have definitive. Decisions and definitions of all the matters that were spoken of. Systemic racism. I wanna know exactly. I want concrete examples that have happened in this city, as some counselors have mentioned. I would like to know uh, from all the citizens uh in committee and different committees, how to address these issues. Uh, and I certainly will move forward with the conversation to do so. However, there are, you know, also things that happen. You know, in the, in the, on social media and different areas that, that refer to people as Nazis. Which was the National Socialist Party of Germany. That systematically destroyed and murdered six million Jews. And people compared to, to, to those, which is abhorrent, and the Holocaust, which is abhorrent. And it should never be referred to uh, eh, eh, historically in, eh, as a, as a student of history in our country. And white supremacy to be tacked upon every person. Who is of white color, I believe is unfair. And I think these issues also have to be addressed. And I plead with members of the community that we all get together, that we sit down, and we have conversations. That can iron out these issues so that we all understand one another as human beings. And move forward to make our city a much better city. And I would also like to say that Mayor Murphy is probably one of the fairest people I've ever known. He's a decent, decent man, and I'm sure that his intentions were not. Negative on this issue. I'm sure his intentions were positive to do something beneficial to the community. And I look forward to working with all the members of this committee to move forward on this issue and put everything out on the table. And all the discussion and all the evidence and all the conditions that have happened over the years. And let's put it on the table. Let's get it out. Let's have a serious discussion and deal with this issue. Because it is definitely tearing the city apart, and that breaks my heart. Thank you.
Anyone further? Uh, Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I have a minute?
A- absolutely. Counselor Ber Martinez.
Yeah, let me, can I just, uh, wanna clarify that I'm here. Uh, when I spoke, I don't want, um. Uh, Mur- uh, Murphy to take this in a personal way from doing the decision. But I think that, to be honest, um. As I give so much thought to the situation, I want, this like, is the elephant in the room that never had to be touched, and nobody wanted to touch it. So to me, this is the great opportunity to move on with actually, even if it's not this one. I was gonna file orders that are gonna get us to the next level, asking our school departments, asking all departments to go through. Some um, understanding of how racism is, it's felt, or sometimes used. For those who are not understanding it. Um, so I want to also give that uh. A pass of information to uh, our interim mayor. Because I know that probably his intention was never to do the decision. Sometimes people run off their own decisions without being advised, and if it's not getting advice, I don't know. But I'm just saying that I wanna, I think this is an opportunity. I saw it as an opportunity to talk about the elephant in the room. And that is the way I'm seeing it, and that is the way, even my family, we had a conversation, we had a meeting about this, and we said. This time that is out there openly and publicly. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, one thing to, to remind everyone here is. Based on my list, and I might have gotten it wrong, but one, two, three, four, Vanessa, Erin, Cocaine, and Elizabeth were all part of a committee. And every one of them said the same thing. They did an incredible amount of work in research, in gathering of information to, as a committee. To then provide. And then it kinda went sideways. There is a lot of work that has been done. It's a lot of work that we need to take, bring them in, to keep it going. So eh, we're not afraid of late files, or we can always carry it to the next meeting. But we shouldn't let four people of a committee come in and tell us this, and then just let it go. And that's where we need to get them back in, in order to gather that and keep this thing going. Which is, I think, what everyone wants. So Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got a statement, then I'm gonna make some comments if I can. Uh, so I'm gonna start by. Stating that I did a poor job explaining the purpose of this order. And because of that, it appears that some of the community believe that I don't think racism and police abuse are serious problems. Let me state unequivocally tonight, racism in all its forms and police abusive practice in all their forms. Are inherently wrong and need to be eradicated to whatever extent possible. I have advocated for the practice of treating each other with respect and dignity. And believe that is needed to overcome many of the prejudice caused by ignorance. I'm gonna go off script here for a second. I grew up in an integrated neighborhood. I consider that one of my greatest advantages in life. Some of my best friends were African-American. All the way through my life. And by, by having that opportunity to know, get to learn and to meet. And to learn to respect and to treat each other with dignity from a young age on. We can pa- with all due respect, we can pass all the laws we want, but that you cannot force. Uh. The elimination of prejudice without better knowledge. And knowledge comes by sitting down and being able to talk. Respect each other's opinions, and I respect the way people have offered their comments to me or at me in whatever else way. Uh, so I just wanna say that. I mean, it was never my intention to make people think that I do not believe. That we have issues. Holyoke, like any other community, has issues. There's no question about that. My purpose for the executive order was simply to clarify the status of Juneteenth as a holiday. And to file a specific order to establish June nineteenth as an official holiday within the city's code of ordinances. I had been advised that to do that required. I had been advised that to do that required a new executive order. If that was wrong, the wrong way to do this, I accept full responsibility. I, I should have sought more information. I should have sought more advice. Obviously, the timing was not good, but the timing was also based on trying to make it an official holiday. When reviewing the recommendations of the executive order from June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, I noted that none had been fully acted upon. That does not mean that I don't think we can work to accomplish some of the intended goals. But I don't believe that the executive order has done that or is necessary. I am more than willing to work with the health director. In our area hospitals and health centers to collect information regarding the causes of health disparities for people of color. I began that process already. If there are specific issues which we as a community can work to address. In order to attain healthier outcomes, I would welcome that information. And I am hopeful that I will have a committee that will provide that information to me and to others. To create improved relations between the community as a whole and the police department, I would hope to establish a community police relations board. That board will consist of concerned citizens, as I know there are many out here, from diverse elements of Hoyoke. But also with several police officers, so that both sides could get the perspective of what's going on. Through respective dialogue and a sharing of concerns, I would hope that we can create a greater understanding of any changes. That might make for a safer and more united community. While I know I have failed at times. I have tried and will continue to try to build a united community in Hoyoke. With the goal of a better quality of life for all of our residents. I'm just going, I want to state some of the things that I've done in my personal life and my political life. I want people to know the kind of person I am. I ran for mayor in nineteen eighty-three. Pretty much no chance to win. I ran for one reason, because at that time Hoyoke was much, much more of a we and a they than we are today. And I knew that a community cannot thrive when we have that kind of exposure. As when I got back on the council, I heard of health concerns in terms of asthma. I filed, I filed multiple orders to try to deal with the issue of asthma. Knowing that that impacts the ability of many of our, our youth from the Latino community. In terms of going to school, making sure their attendance is there and making sure they have uh and a chance to get a good education. Hasn't come to fruition, but that doesn't mean I'm not continuing to work on it. If I go back, when, at one time we were abolishing, we were de- uh demolishing all buildings. And and basically trying to eradicate Sal Hoyoke at that time. I was one of the people that fought and and worked with Nueva Esperanza to make sure that housing in Sal Hoyoke. Was not torn down, that housing that could be renovated and maintained was maintained. I have worked and coached and played with and worked with. People of all races, of all nationalities, ethnic groups and religions. I have tried. I have tried every day. To treat each one of those people. The right way. And I will continue to do that. I've had people ask me, you're acting, just go sit there. I can't do that. My intentions are not to do harm. My intentions are try to make things better. Am I going to make mistakes? Absolutely. Was the way this was handled a mistake? More than likely and almost for certain. Do I think I can do things that are going to make this and potentially, as I know some of you have said, this may be an opportunity? That that may very well be true. I've already scheduled meetings with a number of the people that have commented tonight. And anyone else that wants to meet me, I have said this from the first time I was on, on chosen by you seven weeks ago. You know, my door is open. I'm not always going to agree, but I'll always listen. And I'll listen with respect. And I'll give that person dignity. And I think those are crucial factors. Are they systemic? No, they're one-on-one. And we change racism and we change all the other problems in this community one-on-one. If we treat everybody better all the way through, we're all going to be better. I look forward to working with people, with anyone that wants to work with me or on any of these issues. I will do my best so that there are processes and plans that are enacted. So that we do deal with these issues and we do have a chance to improve the lives of everywhere in the, in the city of Hoyoke. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, there are no other hands. This is just a communication that was sent to us.
Motion received, Mister President.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Five, six, someone have a question, I'm sorry.
I just said no to the receive.
Alright, so five, six. Seven.
Uh, motion to suspend rules take five, six, seven, eight and.
Nine.
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 Nine as a package.
As a package because they're um reap appointments.
So five, it's up, it's up to you normally because it was acting mayor, we'd send it to committee, but the reap appointments. The first one is for Park and Rec and I know they're shorthanded. That's uh Mister Israel Rivera. Uh, he'll serve a three-year term. Six is for local historic district, Fairfield Ave. And that's for a three-year term for Marco Cristini. Hopefully I said that right. Uh, the next one is for Hedict and that's for Mark P. Cutting. That is a three-year term. Eight is the also Hedict is Rosa Pentagod. Uh, that's a three-year term. And then the last one is reappointing one, two, three, four. Um, the fifth one to the, so Citizens Advisory Committee, uh, one, two, three, four, five people.
Make a motion to receive and reappoint.
Motion is to receive and confirm the reap appointments of all the ones I've read. All those in favor. Uh, Counselor Murphy, sorry, I didn't see Counselor Murphy.
I can't, just on, on number nine.
Yeah.
One of the appointments is a new appointment.
Yep, I'm just going to point that out.
Oh, okay, so.
So send that one to public service.
So how did, because it, there's both on here. It's a reap appointment of one, two, three, four. And then one, so confirm the reap appointments and then send the one new one to committee. Do it that way?
Yes.
Counselor Bartley?
Oh, I, well, i- if the chairman wants to do that, I would just respectfully request that. Um, that we just make these reappoint, make these reap appointments and this one exception to an appointment. And I only say that, Mister President, because it's just a monumental task to. Find people to serve on the Citizens Advisory Committee. I think uh Pat certainly. Made his presence known very well last year in all sorts of public forum. I, I, I mean, I'm not sure what else, what else he needs to do to sort of, sort of express himself. So he's, he's a pretty civic conscientious. Person from a, a great family. So I, I, I would, you know, I would just ask my friend, the chair, just to see if we can.
Yeah.
Second exception.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second uh Counselor Bartley's uh motion.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Motion is to receive, confirm all the reap appointments and to appoint the new one, which was Patrick Bowdre. And that's the term that shall, all said terms shall expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, so next year. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Ten is from, it's a communication from the city clerk, the city council to create a process of allowing.
Uh, Mister President, can we just hold off on that one for a second? Because we'll, we'll take that up when we get to DGR, okay?
Okay, okay. So leave, skip ten, go to eleven, which is the regular meeting minutes of May eighteenth.
Motion received and adopt.
Motion to receive and adapt the minutes, hearing no changes or suggestions. All those in favor.
Alright. Motion to suspend, take uh twelve and thirteen as a package, motion to receive them both.
Motion is to take up twelve and thirteen as a package. All those in favor? All opposed. Both are minutes of meetings. The twelve is from uh Park and Rec. That's for the April first meeting. Thirteen is for Board of Health and that's the February first meeting. Motion is to receive. All those in favor.
Aye. Motion to suspend, take fourteen and fifteen as a package and chip them to ordinance, please.
Motion is to take up fourteen and fifteen as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those. And both are going to ordinance. These are the Green Highland LLC. Uh, projects for twenty-six Hadley Mills Road. So those are the ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All the opposed? It's up here. And last one is, no wait, sixteen, communication. From Christine Betty regarding the state pesticide spraying issue and resolution. Send that to.
Public safety.
Safety. All those in favor.
What's, can I, is there an order for, re- related to this thing?
It's a petition.
Number sixteen is a, number sixteen is a petition?
Let me check.
Do we get to six, one to sixteen? Sixteen to seventeen?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one.
So this is from.
It's item sixteen.
Regarding the, the pesticide spraying?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So to public safety.
Okay.
All those in favor.
Thank you.
Aye.
All opposed. Seventeen is a letter of support for Irma Kerr.
DGR, please.
To DJNR, uh, so all those in favor.
Aye.
All the opposed. Alright, petitions. We have eighteen, which is a renewal of a secondhand license.
For all of this paid for?
Motion is approve the renewal. Let me check the fees. All taxes are current. So motion is to receive and grant the renewal. Any comments, any questions on two forty-one Main Street? Hearing none, the clerk will call roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the renewal.
Anderson Burgos? Bartley?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes. Unanimous vote.
We've already approved the renewal.
Motion, uh, President, just to spend, take nineteen, twenty as a package and, and I guess we, we send those to ordinance, please.
Second.
So nineteen and twenty take as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. This is for AMCJ and the other one is Grant Mon, if I can read that correctly. Both to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. President's report, um, quick update. Working with um Scott as well as Jeffrey, as well as uh Acting Mayor Murphy. Uh, we have apparatus or PPP, however you're calling it, set up between the desks. Scott is working on the camera system. Uh, for the two new monitors that are in there. He finally got the pieces that he needed to kind of make that function. There will be a, a test tomorrow at five fifteen. Uh, let Counselor Murphy know if that's what you want to do and volunteer for that test. We're trying to make sure that everything runs correctly. Uh, and that everything's set up in accordance to what we need. Uh, but that'd be tomorrow at five fifteen. And we'll see how the test goes from there. Any questions on that? No? Okay, so it, just reach out to Jeffrey and Mayor, but if you want to make five fifteen for the testing. Um, there was a email sent to me with regards to. Uh, the memorial, which is the Mount Tom. Let me get it correctly so I can say it. It's the Mount Tom um site for where the plane crashed, of which on July tenth at eleven o'clock. They'll be doing the memorial services up there uh to remember all the uh people that are on that plane. Um, trying to think what else we had. And I believe that's it that I, that I have for now. Any updates that I might have missed in emails? Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, if I could just offer a few, a few things. Uh, first, we had a opening of City Hall, City Hall Annex and other offices today. And by all accounts, it was a, a success with no problems, nobody complaining about wearing a mask, nobody trying to say, I gotta go in now. Uh, people were very respectful. Uh, we had greeters at both the parking lot side of City Hall. And door and the main City Hall door right off of High Street. We had a, another greeter uh at the Annex. Uh, I did meet, I went to each of the offices and they are all where they wanted Plexiglas, they have it, so. Uh, it went very well. Hopefully we're going to have no issues with that. Uh, and. Uh, I, I appreciate all the employees coming back and, and coming in without any, any uh. Concerns other than what they had addressed and we were able to take care of that. And I want to thank Sean Gonzalez for coordinating all of that and making sure it got done. Uh, I had a, two events today, one in the morning, which was uh the appointment of ten new police officers, two police. Uh, officers, uh, which gets us close to our ninety, but does not get us to ninety active. Uh, and of those, and I want to emphasize, it was a very uh, a very diverse group. Uh, we, we did have five uh, uh, people, Latino people. We had five women. Uh, it was uh, and they all, I think, will do an outstanding job. And uh, you know, I do appreciate them and they will actually start officially on Sunday. Uh, we have hired or we have agreed to hire a personnel director. And, and I, this is a situation where I wasn't fully aware that I needed to bring this back to the council, but I've been told that I do. Uh, I think it's a late file today. Uh, and I, and I know you have a right to send it to committee. Uh, I, I am hoping that you, uh, you will trust that uh. We've done a relatively good job in terms of hiring somebody that has a variety of experiences in, in uh. Personnel management and, and collective bargaining and, and supervision and training in work, uh, workman's comp. And a variety of other things. Uh, that person is eligible, is available to start next Monday. If we don't do this tonight, then I know, and it has to go back, they will not be able to start until at least June sixteenth. Uh, and as you all know, we've been struggling to try to maintain what we need to maintain in that office. Uh, we had, we did seven interviews. Uh, we had, you know, quite a few. Uh, that were good candidates, but we had a couple that were, what we thought were more exceptional. Uh, and uh, so I'm hoping when it comes that you might be able to uh, and, and I want to apologize because once I. Agreed, this is the person, I got rid of the resume and just sent, kept them over in personnel and. I didn't, I tried to get into the office to get them, but I didn't get there in time, so. Uh, and I was going to try to have Jeffrey send it out, but obviously that didn't work, so. Uh, this afternoon I had a press conference and I want to thank Alicia and Tanya and Kate, uh, who have been. Instrumental in trying to make sure that we have as good a grasp on this American relief. instrumental in trying to make sure that we have as good a grasp on this American relief uh act money as possible. Uh, on Thursday, on the city's website, there will be uh some kind of do, Google document that can be, that will be used to submit proposals uh to be uh, to ask for, uh receiving some of the funding. Uh, we are looking, right now it's six twenty-one, the proposals are due back. Because we're a few days late, I expect that's gonna be six twenty-four, but right now it's six twenty-one. Uh, we've got it, month of July, where we're looking pretty much to uh have the, the public review, the citizen advisory council, and, and my hope is that the last week in July, the DGR committee could review them all and make recommendations the first meeting in August. Uh we are getting fourteen point nine million dollars uh now, uh and another fourteen point nine million next June. Uh, we do have to uh allocate it, we don't have to spend it, but we have to allocate it within that period, so. Uh we have emphasized projects that could be shovel ready, we wanna try to get as many things moving as possible. And uh, so we, we are still learning about the formula and there's now, I, I think the department of revenue has got some kind of tutorial on how you uh calculate your lost revenue from previous years. Um, there's been a lot of questions about that, I know Tanya is working on getting that resolved. And as I said, my, my goal would be with that money would be uh pretty much potentially general fund funding as long as that is what it's allowed. Uh so we're looking at doing those kind of things, obviously we're looking at all, all the infrastructure things, we're looking at housing, we're looking at uh human service type things. Uh we're looking at business, economic growth, how, uh and uh so we, I think we're one of the first communities to actually move, to actually start the fo- the formal process. Uh, we feel pretty comfortable, we keep, I know Alicia keeps getting updates from the congressman's office in terms of what we can, what we can't do, how, how we need to do it. Uh and we'll continue to try to move this process along so that our, our, our hope is that early in the fall we'll start seeing some positive results from what we're doing, if not sooner. Thank you.
Alright, councillor Bartley?
Yeah, just to the chair, to the, to the acting mayor, uh Terry, uh uh one to, to your question, can the, the committee meet in July? And uh typically we do, but w- we'll, I'll, I'll, we'll figure out a date amongst ourselves, uh when we meet June fourteenth. Though, so Jeff and Ryan always posted to our agenda, you know, next meeting date, so we'll, we'll do that on the fourteenth as well and we'll figure out a date in July. And then, second of all, Mister President, just to the present, to the acting mayor. Um, I, I didn't see it, and if, I'll, excuse me if I missed it, but I, I didn't notice on, on the website that you posted your, uh your FY twenty-two budget. And I'm wondering if you would consider uh doing that e- either on the homepage or under your page, unless I missed it, Terry, and um you know, maybe there, but I, I, I think it's, I've had a few calls on, on that, um.
So it's not on, not on the city's website?
Sorry, Terry?
It's not on the city's website.
Terry, I, I don't see it posted to the homepage and I, I don't know where else to look besides the homepage and your page.
Can we, can we post it too, or on the city council side, or does that help or no?
Yeah, just, just somewhere, Todd. And, and if I could, if I could get an email version sent, sent to me, that, that would be uh that'd be great.
I, I have the, I'm pretty sure I have the email, I, I can send it to you, councillor Bartley, I'll send it over to you. But Jeffrey, if you can look into seeing if we can post that on our side, or, or I'm, however?
Yeah, I'll post it tomorrow morning.
Alright, thank you.
And I, and I'll talk to my office about it tomorrow morning as well, councillor Bartley.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you for that, uh just as, cause I know I kinda stumbled through it, and I apologize, it's the B seventeen memorial, July tenth at eleven AM, if people are interested to go to that. Uh speaking of the budget, we will have our budget hearings coming up, everyone should be receiving the information from Jeffrey. Uh we broke it up, uh just as a reminder, we don't have everyone in at one day, that's not fair to everyone. So we break it up in three meetings, invite in all the departments, uh some may not have any, anything to offer for cuts or anything, or they're fine the way it is. And they just say that, uh but others kind of like police, fire, DPW being the big three, uh we get into detail. So the first one will be with the uh acting mayor, order treasurer, uh assessor, and we can start uh looking at the numbers from their point of view and then go from there, so the budget hearings will be coming up. Uh with that, we'll move on to reports of committee, ordinances first. Twenty-one A, committee on ordinance was referred, a special permit application for Green Valley LLC uh for three oh six Ray Street. Uh recommended that be approved with, with the conditions, one, that the owner of the building always pay commercial property taxes rates. Two, the extent allowed by federal, state and local laws for the duration of the special permit. Two, that the business retain a minimum of thirty Hoyop residents for non-security jobs. Three, that hiring preference be given to security personnel that are uh retired police officers or retired members of another police department who now live in the city of Hoyok. Four, there shall be no marijuana consumption allowed on the site. Five, there should be no deliveries or retail medical marijuana from the site to homes, residential or people. And six, the hours of operations be set accordance to city ordinances. The motion would be to receive, adopt, under discussion, councillor Lisi.
Thank you, uh so we had, uh let's see, Jonathan Ferguson and Mark Zatirka and to talk about the um project that they have going on at Green Valley Analytics LLC, and this is, um although it says for mar- ma- marijuana manufacturing establishment, they're actually um running a testing facility, a lab if you will, which is under the jurisdiction of manufacturing according to our ordinances. Um, you know, they really well anticipated our needs and um addressed uh everything in their application package. Uh they did a nice presentation that walked us through um the exterior interior plans. Um they will be hiring about six employees, um these are employees that are going to be um earning living wages with benefits and for the, uh I can't find the name of the sort of director of the lab, but that would definitely be a six-figure salary position. Um so it's exciting, it's the second um analytics lab that we have coming into the city. And um they said that they will be prioritizing hiring students that have completed the HCC um C three program. Um so other than that, uh we, we added the six usual amendments, they are slightly changed based on the changes that we made to the ordinance most recently. Um so, we just are saying now that the hours of operation be set according to the city ordinances. Um and then if we wanna um amend it further, we could, but for this one, um we anticipate them operating only from eight to, sorry, uh eight to eight.
Okay, anyone further? Seeing no one, hearing no one, motions, receive, adopt, uh clerk will call roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit with the conditions as read.
I just need to, I, I just wanna correct one thing that I said, I'm looking at my notes here and I um they're handwritten notes that I made a mistake, so it's not, they're not anticipating running from eight to eight, it is, um they, they would like to make use of the twenty-four hour uh operation that we allow um for the city ordinances now.
Great. So clerk will call roll.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
We vote your approved the special permit, twenty-one B, the committee on ordinance was referred in order that the handicap sign be placed at sixty-three Taylor Street, recommend it be adopted.
Receive and adopt the committee report, pass the first reading.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading, under discussion?
Uh this was a handicap placard filed by councillor Hernandez. Um I'll defer to the maker, but the um commission on disabilities checked it out and gave the recommendation, so the committee is recommending that it be adopted.
Councillor Hernandez?
Thank you so much, not much to add, other than that, um I mean, the um, the applicant is very thankful that um the process went well and that it has been approved, she is in very much need of in this handicap um parking closer to the unit that she rents, and I hope that it gets um installed soon, as soon as DPW can, if this body um votes um a paper of it, thank you.
So the motion would be receive, adopt, pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the handicap sign at sixty-three Taylor Street.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon? Yes. Unanimous vote.
We vote your approved that, twenty-one C, committee on ordinance was referred in order that the city council consider raising the maximum amount of reserve officers from twenty-four to thirty-five, recommend that be adopted, councillor Lisi.
Thank you, uh receive the committee report, adopt and pass the first reading.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading, under discussion?
Uh yes, thank you, this is five-way councillor McGivern. Um it seems that uh we had a limit of uh twenty-four reserve officers and yet um when we actually go to hire the reserve officers, um many of them drop off and take um offers from other municipalities, and so in order to um make use of the um actual number that we have within the budget. Um we were asked to raise the um number of reserve police officers to thirty-five so that even if we um lose some to other municipalities in the hiring process, we still are able to retain the staffing size that we need within the department. Um as the maker, councillor McGivern might have something to add.
Councillor McGivern?
Thank you, Mister President, uh councillor Lisi covered it well, the uh police department requested this, these are for a couple of reasons, uh one, it's difficult to uh, to find candidates who uh, who wanna be police officers these days. And most all communities within the Commonwealth are struggling to uh, to look for people. Our reserves come off the civil service list, uh they do some training immediately and therefore they're open, you know, to other communities having, wanting to pick them up and we uh, we just like to have a bigger pool to select from when it comes when their openings in the Hoyok Police Department. Uh two also though is the patrolmen's union some years ago relaxed the way reserve officers are used, which is good for uh supplementing the uh, the shifts and supplementing the uh, the need for the police department. It also is good training for the reserve officers, so it, it kind of is a win-win in, in a number of different ways. It makes sense to have a bigger pool, a bigger pool to uh be able to look at.
Alright, seeing no one, further motions, oh councillor Bacon, sorry.
Thank you, I just wanted to add that it also came up during our meeting that there's a problem with our auxiliary police because of the reform acts that now require all of the training to be identical for all categories. And so there is a hope that there will be some revisions made so that we can continue to have the auxiliary police force. But in the meantime, there'll be an increased need for the reserve officers as that works its way through the state house, thank you.
Thank you. So here, motion was to receive, adopt, pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
And motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for twenty-one C to increase from twenty-four to thirty-five.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
He's got the thumbs up.
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
We vote your approved that one, off to finance, for finance, twenty-two A. Community finance was referred, CPA fiscal year twenty project recommendation for the Jackson Street first time homeowner affordable housing program.
Motion to receive and adopt?
Motion is to receive, adopt, under discussion, councillor McGivern.
Thank you, Mister uh President, besides uh councillor uh Sullivan who represents us on the CPA, we also had uh Amy Duquoz with us from uh the administrative uh assistant to the CPA itself. We have already voted on this project, it came back to us for some amendments to the project. Uh the, the financial and the concept of it was unanimously voted on by this body, I think uh two, two or three months ago. But the, the changes are, are, are easily understandable. The uh housing authority was part of this, there was gonna be two duplexes that were to be built, the housing authority was gonna build one on their own and he, the Habitat Humanity Organization was gonna build the others. Uh the housing authority had to back out as to doing the actual uh construction and they will be part of the, the plan itself, but Habitat Humanity will do both of the uh duplexes themselves. Um, there's a, I think there's a time, because of this, there's a time uh constraint uh change and there's a, an additional, an extension, I believe Mike, it's another six months or up to six months to uh, to allow for it. Um it, it made sense to the committee, the committee recommends that we re, we once again vote on this project with the amendments.
Councillor Sullivan?
Not much to add, uh one, once again, it's been covered very thoroughly by the chair.
Alright. Anyone further, seeing no one, um motions, receive, adopt, the clerk will call the roll, cause remember with the CPA, it's not first or second reading, it's just to get a, our vote. Clerk will call roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the recommendation from the CPA.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, your approved that, twenty-two B, uh community finance was referred in order that the city council uh appropriate the amount of seven million four hundred seventy-one thousand six forty-five for Sullivan School, Dunhuang School, Ian White School for the various projects, roofs and everything. This would be recommended that be adopted, so receive, adopt, pass the first reading, under discussion, councillor McGivern.
Thank you, Mister President, um we had Whitney Anderson with us for the uh both to uh present this proposal and also to answer all of our questions, which as always, Whitney did a uh remarkable job. Um this is a proposed MSB um project, uh not, there are two types of MS, of mass of, of, excuse me. The, the MSB type projects that they accept, uh this is an accelerated uh project which is similar to what we've done in the recent future where we've had window replacements, boilers that have been installed, and this is about roofs. The roofs that are being proposed to your school building facilities are for Dunhuang, Sullivan and Ian White. A lot of it has to do with additions to these three buildings that have only recently become eligible for the the reimbursement from the MSBA formula itself. Uh Mister Anderson came in and, and went through the entire um explanation of the type of roof, membrane, what they're replacing, how they're replacing it, how they have to go out to bid, the, the prox, right now they're in the architectural design phase. How, how they need to uh, to do this, to uh, to qualify for an MSBA project. Uh by taking our vote, we are signaling that the city is willing to bond, knowing that we will be getting an eighty percent reimbursement. We can not, this is not the bond vote itself, but the project vote, and if we do so, the uh the architectural and design vote is, is eighty percent automatically. And because it's an accelerated project, the formula right now is that we will also be reimbursed for eighty percent. We also had our auditor with us, uh we asked her to uh, just to run some stuff by our bond counsel, by Cinder and uh her associate Abby, as to the, you know, the availability to absorb this with As to the, you know, the availability to absorb this within our depth capacity. Also knowing that our depth capacity could be impacted by the middle school project proposal itself too. I believe everybody received those numbers uh from bond counsel in an email today. Um, but again, what we're doing is initiating this vote to allow the MSBA to consider us. And it's something that, you know, final votes are always down the road for the the final appropriation itself, but. The difference is accelerated project, we're in line for the eighty percent.
Any questions? Just for those who are at home, I think this is an interesting uh page here that's attached to this. Dunhuang School, two point eight million, just doing rough numbers. Uh, Sullivan School, two point two. Uh, Ian White, two point four. Grand total, seven million four seventy-one six fifty-four oh seven. Cities anticipated net cost at twenty percent. Almost one point five. So it's a great thing for the city to to get these done and and get that reimbursement. So motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for twenty-two B.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley? Bartley?
Yes, sorry about that, sir.
That's okay. Rainey?
Yeah.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Twenty-two C, the Command Finance has referred an order. That the Finance Committee consider a potential proposal for viewpoint with Dennis Quaid. Uh, great places to live, work and visit, considering needs of getting to potential uh, uh, let's see, waiting disposition. Rec- actually, no, recommend that be adapted. I apologize, Counsel McGivern. So motion be receive, adopt. Under discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. And uh to everybody, if anybody missed this meeting, it was a fantastic discussion. Um, I can't say enough about Mayor Murphy and the great work he's doing as our interim uh mayor. And this, this is just a highlight of of the way he thinks and he thinks out of the box to do good things for this city. Uh, part of this uh proposal is, is I'm not very familiar with viewpoint of Dennis Quaid. I. I guess I don't watch a lot of public television, but my understanding and the numbers I heard, because I. Very familiar with marketing and uh kind of runs in the family where I listen to it at the dinner table a lot. That the numbers that we are going to ex- to be exposed to in a very positive limelight by taking advantage of uh. Of this uh viewpoint and in this pub- public uh television documentary is incredible. And and the uh the story we have to tell, and I'm not going to even even begin about that because. Everyone on the board here understands the story of Hoyok and the positive things that we have to offer to the world itself. And and I think that's the uh the highlight here. Uh, what we would do is we'd have some production clause buy-ins. The uh they they are capped. We know the exact amount. It's not before us. What we're looking to do is. Is to kind of open up the door, give a green light to uh let this project go forward. And then Mayor Murphy uh or his predecessor would have to come back with the uh with the actual appropriation itself. But I think the uh the the mayor is looking and and I know the uh the director of the other program who is with us. Is certainly looking for a favorable um of green light type situation. So that they can uh propose it to their producers and put us on the list to uh be part of the uh documentary down the road. Uh, our payment, no matter what, would be twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars plus three thousand four hundred dollars. Uh, the the additional three thousand four hundred dollars, uh Mayor Murphy is in agreement with. We'll bring it to twenty-seven nine hundred dollars total. Uh, the twenty-four thousand five hundred is the production part. And I I forget Terry, but I think the three thousand four hundred is the uh brings in just a little bit more exposure. And uh it reaches out a little bit deeper than the uh the the initial production itself it does and and certainly. In in my mind, and I think the committee's mind, we we uh believe that this would be money well spent. But uh the committee did vote in favor of recommending that we go forward with it. And uh certainly, I think Mayor Murphy can add a few things to this. Mr. Chairman?
Uh, hold on, Counsel Granny, Counsel Murphy, then Counsel Granny.
Thank you and thank you, uh, Mr. President. Thank you, uh, Counsel McGivern. Uh. Basically, the the additional thirty-five hundred dollars is for coming to Hoyok and actually filming in Hoyok. So we are not only getting the information out there, we're actually going to actually be able to have. Uh, sites in Hoyok as part of that. And they would be coming, I believe they said, from between twenty-four and forty-eight hours. And that's basically their expense to come to Hoyok, film, meet and interview people in Hoyok and all that kind of thing. Uh, it it just, and the numbers that they talk about are, you know, in terms of homes that they go to are multi-millions. And uh the end, the cost, if we do it, it is like two or three cents a home. Uh, it's it's pretty cheap. And if we were to attract one or two businesses, they they are looking at economic development opportunities. They are looking at tourism opportunities. They are looking at history uh and and those kind of things uh in their presentations. Uh, you know, when when I was uh speaking with the, and I cannot remember the person's name. Uh, but when I was speaking with him several times, I mean, every time we added some more, what about this, what about that? So they they know an awful lot. They seem to be very interested. I believe if if we do it. It they'll try to get this where they're doing it probably in September or October at the latest. Uh, and then they would present right after that. So I mean, it is a, it is an opportunity. I know I had a meeting the other day about tourism and marketing. Uh, this certainly could be. Uh, a beginning step in terms of doing that. So I'm I'm hopeful that the council will do. We have, we know there's no financial commitment until they come back. And say this is what they're going to do. This is how they're going to do it. And then at that point, I would need to put a transfer in front of the council to. To get your approval. But I I I certainly think it has the potential to. Bring visitors to Hoyok, bring businesses to Hoyok, and and potentially bring residents to Hoyok. So, thank you.
Counselor Granny?
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you uh for recognizing me. Uh, once again, kudos to Mayor Murphy for uh initiating this project. Uh, I attended that meeting and I listened to Jason. I believe the gentleman's name was Jason. It was uh representing uh public television. And uh the statistics that he gave, uh as Mayor Murphy has said about reaching uh uh. Different, different homes is uh really something that we've never had an opportunity to do in Hoyok. And I I think a positive reinforcement like this. Uh, for the city to attract business, to attract new residents, to come into the city. Uh, can only be a win. Uh, generally, I'm not in favor of rolling the dice on a project like this. But I I followed thi- this gentleman's uh uh presentation very carefully. All the statistics that he gave, and I think that this is a very, very worthwhile project for the city. I think it would be uh money well spent. Uh, to uh to in- incorporate this this program uh into our our marketing process. Thank you.
Counselor Tomlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, this is a very interesting meeting. I'm glad uh. Um, Acting Mayor Murphy brought this forward. Um, we talked to the gentleman, uh Jason Frank. I guess he was from the the great borough of Brooklyn, New York. Um, and he really uh in-depth told us about where this would be uh uh, you know, brought to uh. On public television, usually during the peak hours, I believe between six and 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 eleven o'clock at night. Um, after certain shows, um, public television shows for like a minute or two and uh. Broadcasts several stations throughout the country. So this is definitely a a would be a benefit to the city of Hoyok and. And I hope all my colleagues in the council would really join me and 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 really uh give us a thumbs up because uh. You know, a- anything that we can do to promote our city and to to bring in business, businesses and residents would really. Add to uh, you know, our tax base and add to the uh the beauty of the city through through other other areas in the country. So I think this is definitely a a a benefit to Hoyok.
Counselor Leahy, you had your hand up?
Oh, yeah. I I was, thank you. Uh, thank you, Counsel Regay. Um, uh, yeah, so I I serve on the Tourism Advisory Board. Along with uh Eric, Big, and. Do others. Um, this is something that I wholeheartedly support. Um, this is something that will certainly put, um. I don't want to say Hoyok on the map, because Hoyok is already on the map. I mean, we saw today what Regis. This is something that not only the digital, we can also use it as a digital marketing tool as well. Um, so having said all that, um, you know, PBS, we've worked with PBS for many years, St. Patrick's Parade. We've gone uh millions of views. Uh, they're a good organization to work with and this is something I'm all for. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. I uh did let Jason Frank know that Counsel Leahy. Is a member of the Actors Guild and certainly willing to uh participate in any of their needs when they come to Hoyok to uh produce what they do. But the uh the staggering numbers is what really.
True enough.
The staggering numbers is sixty million households and businesses will be reached. In the format that they use over a fairly short period of time, over a matter of months. And you, we know we have the story to tell. Can you imagine across this nation, sixty million people hearing our story? I think it's a fantastic idea by Mayor Murphy and wholeheartedly support. We go forward with it.
So the motion is to receive and adopt that we recommend the going forward and then we'll have to just wait for the transfer itself. Because we don't have that before us yet. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The eyes have it. Twenty-two D, the Community on Finance has referred an order that. The Finance Committee invited Mike McManus and Robert Parent to discuss budgeting for sidewalks, trees, equipment. Motion is added.
That the order hasn't complied with, Mr. President?
Motion has been complied with. Under discussion, Counsel McGivern?
Your order, Mr. President, and as you know, we've had Mr. Parent and Mr. McManus before us on a number of uh. Issues that are related towards sidewalks, uh trees, uh roads. We've had other counselors, like we've Counsel Granny had one, where we've done a number of different things where we look for. Their uh their inventory and and apper- um apparatus vehicles that they own and use. Uh, we we just leave at this point, yeah, from an information point of view, this order's been complied with.
That's fine, because the budget's here, so that's fine. So all those in favor, that's complied with? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-two E, Committee on Finance, it was referred. Uh, fifty thousand from Salary Study, uh Reference Library Assistant, Assistant Director to. Please fire indemnification workers' comp for the fifty thousand. Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Under discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had uh City Auditor, Tanya Dojek, with us. Um, this this sometimes gets to be a little bit confusing and uh. It it took me a while to to kind of understand it, but when we went to the uh Section Nineteen Committee and and the city started. Paying attention to health insurance in different ways, a number of things have changed over the last uh more recent uh three to four years. Um, identification is is part of the health insurance. Where certain things that are covered or not covered are placed, you know, such as doctor bills. Um, scripts, certain things that that come in. Uh, can be placed for only employees. We're not, we're not talking about all the employees of the city, but for the employees that fall into a category. Um, that they will actually um get get paid for out-of-pocket uh items like this. Um, the uh auditor explained that the money, the fifty thousand dollars is coming from the the two, three-line items. Which are all surpluses. We know the uh in the library and the assistant director. That there were positions that would not have been full filled for the entire year. And the salary study was just a balance that was uh was left over. So the committee agreed, uh, it's, it is not union, but it is contractual. That we would do, transfer the monies to allow the uh city to pay these bills.
Anyone further?
She did, if I had one thing, she did say that at the beginning of last year, the budget was cut by Mayor Morse. And she feels and and it was underfunded at the time the budget was filed.
So motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
unanimous vote.
Read your vote, you approve that one. Twenty-two F, the Committee on Finance referred that we invite in the auditor to discuss. The rules associated with the ARP Act.
Uh, this actually remained in committee.
Oh, okay.
Is, we we met on Thursday night because of the holiday weekend and because all of our other committees grabbed up Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. For the, for the Chair of the Finance Committee to know what the calendar was offering. We had no choice and I thank the members of the Finance Committee for meeting on Thursday, but it didn't make the agenda. Because the agenda had the early uh deadline.
Right, so that, that one's not here. That one stays in committee. So we're on to. There is no Public Safety, Public Service Committee on Public Service was referred. An order from Acting Mayor McGee to appoint Ray Dronowski to the Democratic Member of the Board of Resident Voters. Recommend it's been complied with. Under discussion, Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, hi. Uh, alright, so we had um uh Ray Dronowski come in front of us the other night and he did a fantastic job. I think the, everybody here in the city of Hoyok knows Ray and the hard work that he puts forth uh for many different organizations. Uh, but he is also, um, also, uh, I think he's on his second uh term as the State Committee. He was also voted in as um, black in two thousand twelve, the Electoral College. Uh, he lives here in Hoyok, uh, lives at Jarvis Ave. This is for a three-year term. Um, uh, I ca- I think Counselor, I think Counselor McGee, you asked for it to go to committee. Uh, if you have anything to say on it? Other than that, I think uh that we should confirm him.
Yeah, no, so once again, anything that was going at the time for reappointments or appointments or hirings. Uh, we were told by Legal, that was Crystal at the time, to. Send it, because I was an acting mayor, to send it to committee, because the committee would have to take it up. And that's why all these went to committee pursuant to that regulation. I know tonight. We took a bunch of them up for reappointment and it just approved it on the on the floor. But at the time, that's what what the request was from Legal. Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I I was at the President on the Zoom meeting uh. Uh, with uh with the Public Service Committee and uh did listen to the interview. It was a good interview. As Counsel Leahy did say, you know, Ray is well-known, not just on the Democratic City Committee, but well-known for his efforts throughout the city. Um, he also, um, I did ask him, and I would like to take a minute. Um, to to recognize the person he's replacing. He is, he is replacing Haley Fair Dunn, who has served, I believe, two terms on that committee. I know she did a fantastic job. Uh, I've I've worked with Haley and a number of other committees. Uh, within, around the city and she is just an incredible uh person to have uh as a, both as a. As a member and as a worker, because she is tireless when she she takes on the jobs that she takes on. And I know as as a register of voters, this is not always an easy job. There were some recounts. There were some, you know, always some controversy that they have to uh be on top of and just on the daily operations and policies. And certainly, it's uh it's important to have good people and Haley was one of those good people that we have had. Um, it it also goes to say that the, these, the names are submitted and and I think the city clerk will correct me if I'm wrong on this one. But I believe that this is an order we adopted years ago, that the, that each committee would submit two to three names. That the mayor could choose from for the uh for the term. And 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 of course, this is the uh the way it works and it's important to understand. It's not just an individual coming forward to uh Mayor McGee, but the Democratic City Democratic Committee. And I think our next side on the Republican uh Committee, City Committee also submitted names for these uh positions. But uh just wanted to say kudos to uh Haley for the job she did do.
Yeah, just on that, for Counsel McGivern, that is correct. A letter is sent to the. Democratic Committee and Republican Committee asking them to submit names. They submitted the names and uh. Ray was the one that received the votes for the appointment. Um, with regards to Haley Dunn, uh. Can't thank her enough for everything that she's done uh for this city. As well as this board, uh always there, always helping out the uh clerk's office, as well as any of us, anytime we need anything. I know I've called her for several things and she never says no. So, thank you Haley for everything. Uh, we welcome Ray and uh any, anyone further? Seeing none, motion be to receive, adopt and confirm uh Mr. Ray Dronowski. Uh, for the Democratic Member. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Next was twenty-four B, which is Public Service Appointing uh, Ms. uh, McNeil to serve as the Republican Member of the Registered Voters.
Yeah, make a motion to receive and to appoint.
Motion received, adopt to appoint.
Yeah, this is for a reappointment as well. You gave like clarification earlier. Um, so just like Haley and then now Drew, uh, this is at the opposite side, this is the Republican side of it. Um, she's worked at Hoyoke um, since about nineteen eighty or so. Uh, she is a Boston Law, she's an Eagle Law School. Uh, uh, she knows a lot about uh, different things regarding grants and that sort of thing. But uh, one of the things that she likes to do is she paid attention to the audit of the last election. And she said that everything went very smoothly, and uh, one of the things that she wants to make sure is just the process is in place. And uh, you know, all the ballots are done correctly. Um, so I think this is a, a good appointment, and uh, I'd make a motion for it to be confirmed.
Motion is to receive and adopt the, to confirm the reappointment, and I, I can honestly say I was part of that uh, process of doing the, the audit. And I got a chance to work with her. She was absolute uh, blast to work with and, and just made the counting of the ballots uh, even more fun that day, so I, I thanked her for that. So here is to confirm reappointment, all those in favor? All opposed? Twenty-four C is a letter to reappoint Francis Wilson to the Historic Commission, uh, so it's a reappointment to the Historic Commission. He will serve a till April sixteen, twenty twenty-one.
Yes, uh, she was also, yep, thank you, she was also a very good uh, uh, reappointment. Excuse me. And uh, she has a, quite a background. Uh, she's born and raised in Hoyoke. This is her third term on the Historic Commission. Excuse me, apologize. Um, her background is uh, history and research and economic development. Uh, she uh, says, I, I took note of this, she's an electric child of the sixties. Um, she has her bachelor degree in uh, grad- uh, graduate degree in education. Uh, you know, some of her background is urban ministry, Hoyoke um, Street School. She taught also in Hampshire College. Uh, she was also Assistant Dean at Winnick Law. Um, she has a good background, and uh, I think there's another good appointment, so make a motion to be confirmed.
Motion is to receive and uh, adopt the recommendation to reappoint uh, Ms. Wilson, all those in favor? All opposed? Twenty-four D is the reappointment of Lori Belanger to the Purchasing Director. Uh, this is a four-year term, which will expire November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion to receive and confirm?
Confirm, yep.
So uh, Ms. uh, she wasn't able to attend the meeting uh, for the very uh, specific reason that she was going to take the exam for her job the following day. And she asked if she could use the evening to uh, study, and uh, and I thought that was a good idea on her part. Uh, but I think we all know her, I think we all know her to be a hard-working person. We all know her to be a kind person. I think that uh, she's worked very well for her city. Um, and, and I think, I, I think all the questions that we would have asked, I think we already know. Um, but I, I would certainly like to see her reappointed.
Anyone further? See, see no one, motion is to receive and adopt the reappointment of Lori Belanger, all those in favor? Twenty-four E, Public Service, uh, was referred that the Park and Recreation Department DPW come before to discuss the Jones Point area and how to better utilize the space, recommend it's been complied with, Counselor Leahy.
Um, I thought Todd, or Counselor McGee, I thought we tabled this, for the fact that uh, but I'm, I'm trying to remember now, I'm looking at my notes, just the fact that we did have uh, Terry come in and Michael of the Mass come in, and they gave us kind of a, a very quick, very uh, two-sentence breakdown, pretty much saying that they're going to be use CPA funding uh, for the Jones Park, maybe next year and near, uh, year after. Their first priorities are uh, uh, the Pinia Park, the Spray Park, and uh, Mayor Field, so it looks like the Jones Point is pushed off a year or two. So I would like to see that stay in committee.
It was pushed off to next year, the funding was going to be for next year. Uh, but I've written down that was complied with, simply because I think we were going to have them come back when they had the plan, they were going to redo a plan and they wanted to get neighborhood involvement to see what they would want to do with the park. You know, it's got the tennis court, that's the great thing now, but the rest of the park needs some serious work. And some constituents had reached out to me to figure out where we were. Terry did say, next year is pretty much the timeframe they're looking to do it with the funding that they believe is coming in.
Okay, we'll see, keep our fingers crossed. So I guess uh, to be complied with.
Yeah, Ca- Counselor Lisi, you hand your hand up.
I, I was just going to offer the points that you made about the survey and wanting uh, community input on what to do with the park moving forward.
Alright, so that, this is complied with, all those in favor? Twenty-four F, the Committee on Public Service refer that the Personnel Department post a position for the Treasurer and the Public Service Committee begin interviews for the Treas- to fill the Treasurers' unexpired term uh, for Sandy Smith, recommend it's been complied with.
Yes, recommended complied with. Uh, we brought uh, uh, Mrs. Jakowski in. Um, Mrs. Jakowski has uh, uh, some fantastic experience. Uh, I think, I think she's the only person that applied for the position. I mean, Todd, at this time, can we can we nominate her for the position?
I would assume we could. I'll defer to Counselor McGivern. Isn't this what we're doing with this orders to confirm or appoint? Or would need a separate order for that?
Want to make a motion for a legal, Todd?
Yeah, mo- do you want to ask Legal or just refer to Legal and take it up on June fifteenth?
Legal's going to know the answer tonight, but.
Well, if they, if they do, that would be a good thing, so she can get, get going on her position.
So motion, spend the rolls to this, see if Jenna has an answer to this one? All those in favor? Jenna, you there?
I'm here, can you repeat the question, please?
So, Order twenty-four F was in order to who post an interview to then fill the unexpired term of then uh, Treasurer Sandy Smith. Uh, Katie Jakowski came in, and she was the only one that applied, so we kind of did the interview there. Would we be proper to then go forward to vote tonight to appoint Katie to fill the unexpired term of the Treasurer?
I would just err on the side of a caution, have it um, Legal look over it in more detail rather than give an impromptu response tonight.
Okay, so want to make a motion to table this? Alright, table it, take it, take it, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Leahy. Uh, twenty-five A, we are now moving on to DG and R. The Command DG and R was referred, uh, the CDVG, CV, Public Notice, um, Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Eighteen Annual Plan, recommend that be adopted, under discussion, Counselor.
Motion to uh, receive and adopt the committee report, please?
Receive and adopt, Counselor Bartley.
Um, just uh, through the chair to the Administrative Assistant, uh, Jeff, did we um, it, did, we, we did receive a, a, a final summary from s- um, from Alicia, did we not?
Yes, yes, we did, and that was.
Is that late filed, Jeff?
That, well, that, this order is that order.
Okay.
That's the way it had appeared as the, as the original order that was referred, but this is what you discussed in committee.
It, it is, but we, we didn't have the um, we didn't have her, we don't have her summary before us, technically, but it's alright, it's good enough. Uh, so, so the, the committee had a, a, a very productive meeting. Um, again, I, I, I can't thank uh, Acting Mayor Murphy enough for, uh, he's not on the committee anymore, uh, but for being present, it makes a tremendous difference. Uh, I, I only speak for myself, but certainly for me, to, to have the Acting Mayor uh, present, uh, Mr. President, when, when we, uh, when we go through these. And um, and you can see it in the results of the, of the CDBG, um, the regular CDBG, uh, that was um, uh, not only was it, was it a cooperative uh, endeavor, but the Acting Mayor actually went a step further uh, by doing more due diligence than what was necessary and consequently got more funds to more deserving entities. So the, the Acting Mayor um, again, uh, should be, uh, should be credited for a hands-on engagement, and that is a massive difference-maker. Relative to um, relative to this, uh, Mr. President, we, we really didn't have uh, any any uh, quibbles, but we got some uh, clarifications uh, from uh, from Alicia and from the Acting Mayor as to how the funds are now before us. Uh, basically, the, I'll, I'll sum it, there was a, a lack of capacity uh, for, for, for some things, the Board of Health didn't, uh, uh, overstated it, it's, it's, it's need. Um, so w- w- we can, and the Acting Mayor uh, has now taken funds and to, to support uh, the Boys and Girls Club, the Chamber of Commerce with the Farmers Market Manager, which we zeroed out, everybody zeroed out at the last time. Providence Ministries, uh, you know, Marcus Pantry, instead of twenty thousand, again, forty thousand dollars, Western Mass Eldercare Meals on Wheels, same thing. Uh, Women Shelter, uh, which now has a different name, but I don't remember it, but it, they have a new name, and so another ten thousand for them. Uh, uh, and, and then ju- just some other really uh, important uh, important uh, uh, institutions are, are going to be funded. So the, the committee voted unanimously to uh, support the uh, recommendations of the Acting, uh, well, recommendations of the um, uh, put before us, and the Acting Mayor has said that he's, he agrees to, to them all, I believe. Thank you.
The motion is to receive, adopt the committee report based on the allocations. Um, we need a roll call for this one, do we, Dave?
I don't think so.
Yeah, so all those in favor? All opposed? I know it's an allocation of money, but it's through the because it goes to the mayor for final. Uh, twenty-five B, uh, Committee on DG and R was referred, nor at the City Hoyoke through the Honorable City Council and Honorable Mayor, petition the Massachusetts General Court to establish a process for recalling officials for the City of Hoyoke, and said let, let legislation be entitled, an act providing for recall of elected officials of the City of Hoyoke, recommend that be adopted.
Motion received, adopt the committee report.
Motion received, adopt, under discussion, Counsel.
I'd like to make a motion to sus- suspend and take number ten off the table, please.
So suspend the rolls, go back to ten and bring it up, all those in favor?
Alright.
Uh, this is a communication from the city clerk. Uh, Dear Chairman Bartley and Honorable City Council, please accept this as a communication regarding the City Council's orders to create a process that will allow the citizens petition recall the elected official who holds a four-year term. Special legislation is necessary to adopt the recall provision, provision under the provision of the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Fifty-four, Section Forty-two. So you must have final written notice of any ballot question at least thirty-five days before the municipal election. The municipal election being held this year is November second, twenty twenty-one. Since this is being proposed by such legislation, this means that the act would have to be passed by the state legislator and signed by the governor at least thirty-five days before the election. This will, this will have a summary, which it should, the state recommendation is prepared by the city solicitor, which must uh, vote on the city council prior to the fire, thirty-five days as well. I hope this answers your question regarding timeframes. Respect for yours, Brennan Murphy McGee.
Motion is to uh, is to receive?
Motion is receive item ten, all those in favor?
Just back to, back to the main motion, and then I'll, I'll get to the uh, number ten in a second. Uh, so we, we had this before us, I, I think this is the third time, but I'll stand corrected if necessary. Um, we had a, a very good discussion um, about the uh, about the gist of the order. Uh, we had participation from, from all the committee members who, who, who appeared. And, and then we had um, uh, one question about uh, sec- about paragraph F, Section Three, and that's where uh, we made a motion and we got a very thorough and professional summary from the city clerk uh, relative to this question. And this came up, Mr. President, because uh, the, the, the issue is, is whether we want to have it on this year's ballot, and of course w- w- we don't know what the timeline is until Brennan got back to us with the timeline. So it seems that if we pass this tonight, if that's the will of the body, we can ship this off to Boston, have the state delegation uh, uh, handle it, uh, and hopefully move it along quickly. And then the state delegation can get it back to us in ample time, especially to the clerk in ample time. So put it, put on the uh, on the November ballot. And uh, because, so now, now we know, and, and this is very timely, of course, for obvious reasons, because we have a a mayoral, uh, mayoral election coming up, and as we noted, we have we have a, we only have a, a select number of uh, four-year o- o- offices, uh, in, including the mayor, the treasurer, uh, the clerk, and then the um, two-at-large uh, school board members, so a total of five if I'm if I'm wrong, again, I'll stand corrected if I'm, if I'm, if I'm, if I, if I'm wrong on that one. So uh, so, uh, in looking this over, it was uh, it was something that we were familiar with, but yet we, we went through it pretty thoroughly, and we agreed that it was uh, it was well-written, well-drafted. Have to really thank the uh, the, the Charter and Rules Chair lady uh, for, because they, they really, that, that committee really carried the ball. Uh, which, we just gave it a kind of, well, a once-over in DGR, and uh, um, although we, 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 we did get the, 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 the really good memo from the clerk, and thank you to the clerk for uh, pulling that together. So, uh, that's the committee report, thank you.
Alright, Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, at the last committee meeting, had asked uh, at this call to committee, so I, we could get a copy of it. I know it's been before us more than once, and I did have the copy. I was late getting to DGR, but I know they vetted out the uh, language, as Counselor Bartley just said. The uh, two most important items to me are, besides the fact it's a four-year term, is that it takes two hundred and fifty uh, signatures of, of registered voters to file the petition itself. And it cannot happen in the final twelve months of the four years. The recall can only happen before the final twelve months. But I'm, I'm just, I, I'm, I appreciate everybody, everybody's patience, and I did have time to make sure the uh, written languages, the way it was the last time we saw it.
So, seeing no one else, motion is to receive and adopt the committee report, um. And this would be to then vote. Yeah, it's going to be a roll call, I, I was getting to that. You're voting to approve the act to recall elected official based on the language that you had reviewed. Uh, that came out of Charter and Rules, but as Counselor Bartley said, they gave the uh, taking it up right away so we could have it for tonight. Counselor Paulman?
Yeah, thank you, uh, through the, the president, uh, to the chair of the committee, uh. Uh, Counselor Bartley, is it also the, that it cannot happen within the first year?
That's right.
Okay, just want to make sure. I know Counselor McGivern said the last year, but I thought it was also the first year of the term. Thank you.
So clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the legislation for the recall of elected officials for a four-year term.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez? Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
No.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Paulman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Ten yeas, three nays.
Your vote, you approve that one, off to.
Give a question from Counselor Anderson Burgos.
I'm sorry, uh, Counselor Anderson Burgos. Where'd he go?
I just, yeah, uh, so I'm just trying to understand that I know that if we send it to the state um, for, so they, they can act on it. Um, my understanding is, so if somebody wants to get rid of a mayor or an elected official that's got four years, right? That's two hundred and fifty signatures that would require, so then who has the last say? Is it the city council that would say? You know, here's the two hundred and fifty signatures. Who, who is the final say on, on removing that mayor or that, that elected official?
So it's them getting a petition, and if they meet the requirements, they're asking that a vote be placed to remove. So that the citizens will vote.
Right, so, but that would, that would take an election of the city as a whole, right? Not just two hundred and fifty signatures.
Correct, correct, correct. So the two fifty, the two fifty is saying we want to remove X, we want to put it as a ballot question. I'm trying to think of. I'm trying to think of, yeah, what's going on in California? They gotta get a recall petition to then have a vote to recall the person.
Then I I changed my vote to a yes, because I I understood it. What I understood was two hundred and fifty signatures that that would take. Oh, no, that's not.
No, no, it'd be to put it on a ballot to then remove.
My apologize, I I, geez, I'm sorry, I I I see ya.
No, 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 that's not a problem at all.
Do you want to, at a risk card? I mean, I I have no mood to a motion or reconsider, we already passed it, so.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, at this point, yeah.
We could do a motion to reconsider. In the minutes that that the words six counselor changes position.
Yeah, thank you.
So Counselor Anderson Burgos has changed from no to a yes, we we can do that. So it'd be eleven to, was it, eleven to two? It's almost ten o'clock. Um, let's see here, twenty-five C. Uh, Committee on DGR was referred or our law department, send out a demand letter to the insurance company under Mass General Law, Act Three A, uh, for the unfair methods and uh, for business of insurance, recommend it's been complied with.
Oh, yeah, uh, yeah, it's just a, uh, yeah, it's a the motion to to receive and adopt the committee report, Mr. President.
Motion is receive and adopt, under discussion, Counselor.
This, this is, this is put uh, put before us a little while ago, and it was relative to the Essex House. And and the the issue with the maker of the order, uh, that the that the uh, that the maker had, and I know, I know his speaker is on the committee, the vice chair of the committee, is um, wanted to make sure, and and it was a pretty straightforward request. Did, wh- wh- the question was whether demand letters were sent to the insurance company. And we were uh, finally advised after all this period of time by the new acting solicitor that yes, the demand letters were sent. So the maker of the order felt satisfied. The main point that was derived in that committee meeting, Mr. President, is that the issue has to be taken up in, in, we took up no detail whatsoever on this. It has to be taken up in executive session uh, uh, pursuant to um, outside counsel's position and pursuant to the solicitor's position. The 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 acting solicitor uh, uh, just didn't express anything to me, and I'm grateful for that, because I I I don't want to know until we get to executive session. So so why don't, why don't we just, why don't we just wait till uh, you have a chance to call it? I would, I would hope we wouldn't do it this month. I I know there's, I know, I just hope we don't call a special meeting this month. But it may be, uh, Mr. President, if you would consider it, maybe for an hour beforehand in the first meeting in in August, or perhaps the first meeting in September, um, if you would consider that, um, as a, as a, as a possibility to have an executive session. Because uh, because there are some important things that that she wanted to put, uh, this solicitor want to put before us, including this matter. Thank you.
Anyone further? So motion is this one has been complied with, and I'll get some dates for everyone and confirm the best time for the executive session, all those in favor.
Alright.
All opposed. Alright, where there's no Charter and Rules, there is no joint committee, uh, motions, orders, and resolution. The first one is from myself, it's uh, ordered that the Public Service Committee invite in all the recommendations that Scott, um, that's, once again, I'll rephrase that. Scott went out and got us a list of a bunch of uh, interpreter services for the city council that we should review. Uh, this is one of the issues with the legal matter that they brought up, and the legal opinion is coming from the attorney, we're just waiting on that. But this is the list that he was currently working on, and he gave it to us, so I'm providing it to us in order to then have public service do the interview. So motion be received and send to public service.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Alright.
All opposed. Twenty-nine is from Counselor McGee, Counselor Leahy, that the City of Hoyok look into adopting the ordinance similar to Springfield with regards to recreation and off-highway vehicles, send that over to ordinance. All those in favor?
Alright.
All opposed. Uh, from thirtieth from Counselor McGee, or that the acting mayor consider using ARP Act funds towards the Hoyok Row proposal, and there was an attachment to that. I know he just mentioned tonight, there's a way they can apply, so I'll send them over to that. So I'll just send this to finance for now. Because Hoyok Row wants to come in anyways and chat, give an update, so.
And the, and the proposal will be up on on Thursday, so they can start.
Okay, so I'll alert them to that.
Ready to answer any questions, so.
Alright, so I'll alert them to do that on Thursday, but send it to finance, because they were going to do updates anyways on the project. All those in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Thirty-one is from.
So President, if I can make a motion to suspend the rules to take up thirty-one, thirty-six, and thirty-seven as a package, refer it to finance.
Right, so thirty-one is, um, so thirty-one, thirty-six, and thirty-seven as a package, all those in favor?
And thirty-two and thirty-three, too, please.
No, I, Mr. Mr. President, just the three I mentioned, please.
Okay, so thirty-one, thirty-six, and thirty-seven as a package, all those in favor? All opposed, thirty-one is fifty thousand from power shovel operator to claims and damages. Thirty-six is the Commonwealth Trust Fund grant for twenty thousand. Thirty-seven is the uh, recovery funds, uh, another grant. So all those to finance, all those in favor, oh, oh, sorry, Counsel Murphy, sorry.
If if it's at all possible, and I, and uh, I got this information late today, so I'm on thirty-seven, it's my understanding that uh, we need to accept that. But the federal government is right now, we're not getting the money into our account, which which we have been told can be an interest bear, interest, you know, uh, until we actually adopt this. Uh, and then, and then our treasurer would actually go into the United States Treasury account and and actually put the fourteen point nine million dollars into our account, which she found out is interest, and the interest bearing. So, you know, I mean, I don't know how much fourteen point nine in two weeks makes, but if we can add some dollars, uh, you know, I mean, I I'm I think we pretty much have gone through what this is all about and how we're going to do it. So if we could, if we could adopt that, I think she would probably go to the US Treasury tomorrow and try to transfer that money into the account that she just established.
So thirty, how about we do this, thirty-one to thirty, thirty-one and thirty-six to finance, there's no arguments to that one. All those in favor?
Alright.
All opposed, thirty-seven, uh, Counselor Murphy has brought up that he would like some action on it tonight, under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Hi, Mr. President, I I with all due respect, um, earning a little bit of interest would be nice for two weeks, but we will have a finance committee meeting before our next meeting, and I still have questions, I believe there are other questions out there. Um, there's a lot of questions about the way money is coming in through the federal government, when it inter uh, plays with the general budget, when it doesn't interplay with the general budget. And I I with all due respect, I I think we need to uh, air this one out in committee.
Okay, okay, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I I I generally I would support that position, but we 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 are going to take this up um, when the money comes around in depth, in 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 committee, so that we'll we'll know exactly what the funds are. So I I don't see why we need to take it up now, only to pass it, and then, and then we're going to take them when the months come in, we're just going to take, send them all to committee anyhow. So I I I'd be of the opinion to just pass it tonight, thank you.
Counselor Leahy.
Yeah, thank you, um, I was going to say exactly what Counselor Bartley just said. Uh, I I want to get the money as fast as possible, put it into our account. Uh, but uh, I do uh, also share the same concerns as Counselor McGivern with a plethora of different questions. And I have a lot of questions for um, the now acting mayor, uh, Murphy, uh, regarding the committee that um, uh, uh, Mayor Morris had put together, you know, exactly what have they been doing? Uh, who are the members of that committee, how much has been paid to the committee? Uh, where where are the minutes of that uh, of that committee? Um, uh, so I I do have a lot of questions, and I could do that in committee after we get the money, thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
Reading, and I don't have this in front of me, I had no idea we were voting on this display tonight, but just just read what's on the agenda. Setting up a grant and authorizes the establishment of a fund for the appropriate method of the accounting, the receipts, and expenditures of all resources. If we vote on this tonight, we're giving up our right to vote on these dollars, and they go into revolving, I'm sorry, to a grant account that can be spent by the mayor, the treasurer accordingly. There is, we have not established how these monies are going to be spent. We've been asking this question for at least three or four months. It's been on every finance committee agenda, how do we do this? And we've gotten, every time we veered this, we've gotten a different answer. If we vote on this tonight, we're giving up our right to have a say in how these monies are spent.
Mr. President?
Counselor Grani.
I agree with Counselor McGivern on this issue, I believe he's spot on, I think that's the appropriate thing to do. So uh, I think that it should go uh, uh, to committee, I think it should be studied in depth, thank you.
Alright, so the.
Look, Counselor McGee?
Yeah, Counselor McGee.
So is is that correct, what Counselor McGivern is saying, if we vote on this tonight, uh, the city council, basically loses all control?
Well, technically, well, once again, we're still trying to get answers as to how this grant works, but if we were to vote on this tonight, uh, and pass it, then this is saying you're establishing that fund now. And if it were to be like CBG funds, where, and I'm not saying Counselor Murphy's doing this, but I'm just giving the example. He could set up the funds and appropriate it in that fashion. I mean, you could do that, I'm not saying that would happen, but Counselor McGivern is correct on his, on his way that this order reads.
Okay, so having said that, um, I will change my opinion and uh, go along with us in this committee.
Ca- Counselor Murphy.
Yeah, ju- just, uh, I mean, every, every uh, information we have, uh, it it is going to be treated like community development funding, and it's going to go through that same process. Uh, the only possible exception to that is uh, when we can calculate the lost revenue. And then it appears that that can go in and be part of the general fund and and would be uh, appropriate uh, before the council in in order to appropriate those funds. But all the others, every, every indicate, every answer is it's going to be as if it's a community development program, it's it's going through the same procedures as the black man.
So, the motion, I, because I lost it in track, was there a motion to send the committee, or so? Yeah, thirty-seven, that is the original motion, sorry, so, and then.
No other motions are made, Mr. President, I make the motion refer it to Committee on Finance.
One second.
We've lost the president.
Uh, I'm back, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I froze up again, oh, boy, here we go. Uh, motion is refer to finance, all those in favor?
Alright.
All opposed, before I freeze up. Alright, so thirty-two is from Counselor McGivern. Thirty-three.
Make a motion to suspend, excuse me, to suspend the rolls. You take up item thirty-two and thirty-three as a package, pass the first reading.
Motion is to suspend the rules, take up thirty-two and thirty-three as a package, all those in favor?
Alright.
All opposed. Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading, under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Uh, Mr. President, I think we all recognized both these orders. Uh, they were originally filed by Mayor Morris, they were refiled by yourself when you were the interim mayor, and you're again, for the second time, then refiled by uh, Mayor, by Mayor Murphy. The purposes of the refiles were questions, legitimate questions about being brought up by uh, by the city council itself. But I will note that nothing has changed in terms of the transfer itself. It's monies that are being transferred uh, from uh, special counsel into the city solicitor's line item for the purpose of paying back pay to the former uh, city solicitor, Crystal Barnes, who was acting as city solicitor, going back to two thousand eighteen, October, when then the uh, city solicitor, Paul Pear, left the city. Uh, it's been recognized uh, most recently by our, our uh, our new city solicitor, Lisa Ball, that these, this is not a salary increase, not to be treated as a salary increase, but a differential uh, situation where the salary between what would be the senior assistant city solicitor, which Crystal Barnes was at the time, and bumping her up into the work that she did. No one has disputed that she did the work over that period of time. No one has objected to the fact that she, you know, should have been, by Mayor Morris in the beginning, recognized with this pay grade, and and no one, I think, has has made an argument that, you know, she is not deserving because of the work that she did for the city. So we we've vetted this out in committee at least uh, at least twice, maybe three times. We've had a discussion before the city council, I think, our three out of our last four meetings. Uh, for the different reasons, this is here for a final vote. I'm only asking that at some point in time, thirteen city councillors vote on this, one way or the other. Uh, you you can believe that it's the right thing to do, you cannot believe it's the right thing to do. But we we should not be using procedure to avoid voting on something, and I just ask that we pass the first reading tonight.
Anyone further? Uh, see no one, Counselor Bacon.
So I I just want to make one comment, because in my experience relative to this matter, the only time we avoided a vote was at the special meeting, and that was because there was the desire to make sure there were thirteen councillors present. And we have, not in my experience, held off meetings to make sure there's thirteen councillors present before we take votes. We've made many votes without thirteen councillors being present, thank you.
Any, anyone further? So the motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Uh, all those opposed?
No.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading, first reading passed, I only heard one no, just for the record, unless I'm wrong. Because two no's, okay. So that's only two no's, so pass the first reading, that was passed. Motion is to pass the second reading, the clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for thirty-two and thirty-three.
Mr. President?
Uh, hold on, hold on, Counselor Bacon.
Um, under discussion, even though we have discussed this previously, I just want to once again object to the fact that we are going back for two years. We're taking eleven thousand dollars of taxpayers' money, this is not our money. This is hard-earned money by the taxpayers of the city and paying it out to a former employee. That former employee was in charge of her budget, she expended the money out of those lines during her tenure and did not seek payment under the current ordinances at the time. So now we're going back in time for two years, when we're sitting here looking at a budget that's over three million dollars out of whack that we're going to have to try to bring into balance after the year and the hardship that many in our city have tolerated and lived through. I cannot object more strongly to this late in the game payout of eleven thousand dollars, thank you.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Um, can I, is it okay to ask legal, through you, um, what are the ramifications if legal action should take place? I don't know if that's even okay to talk about, but I, I mean, I, it's something to look at, because the city has been sued, I can't even count how many times. And if this is just another lawsuit, then we really got to think about that, we're talking about taxpayers' money, we got to think about when the city gets sued, that's. I just, I just want to be careful, that's all. I know, I'm sorry, um, Counselor Bacon, I, oh, through the chair, so Counselor Bacon, I understand your point, I really do. I just want to make sure what's, I'm trying to keep the the, what's best at the, you know, for the city. The inter- at the interest of the cities, you know, at the taxpayers' money, at the taxpayers' expense.
I mean, you can suspend the rules to ask legal, um, a question.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules to ask legal question, all those in favor?
Yeah, I agree.
All those opposed? Is legal still, yeah, okay.
I'm here, um, my understanding, I believe Counselor McGivern talked about this at previous, um, he's brought it up at previous council meetings. There is the 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 potential of, if there's a lawsuit, rather than the eleven thousand dollars, there could be subject to treble damages. So you are looking at a bigger number if um, there's a lawsuit brought forth.
Okay, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I I just can't think, and I still have not heard an argument of why Crystal Barnes doesn't deserve this money. It doesn't break down to, to a lot of money, if you calculated the weekly or the bi-weekly cost, you'd be surprised about how little this really is for the. you'd be surprised about how little this really is for the work that she performed. I'll, I'll remind everybody that she worked incredibly hard during this period because as the senior, um, ass- assistance city solicitor, she also was assigned to the city council. She was assigned to us where she appeared in every ordinance committee meeting. She appeared in many of the charter and rules committee meetings. She appeared when needed in other committee meetings and at every city council meeting during this period. And then the next morning, had to go to work, supervise the people within the department, manage the budget, yes. But manage all the other things that were going on within, within the law department itself, which included lawsuits, which included the interaction with the, uh, departments who needed, needed the advice of, of the law department itself. She worked, it was like she was working three jobs during this period of time. Why Mayor Morse did not pay her, I don't know why. There was, there would have been no objection if he did it. We, this, this, even this body agreed to pay her over the last twelve months for that salary, which is what we're asking to do going back to October two thousand eighteen. It's, we're, we're not asking for anything different than what the salary would be during that period of time if she was appropriately paid, paid by the mayor. We have a chance to correct the mistake of, of Mayor Morse and do it right. If you Google this and you go back to when Paul Pear left, you'll find an article, I, I believe it was in the, in the Republican or in Mass Live that quotes our then-President, uh, Jordan and a number of city councilors and talking about the same thing that happened with Paul Pear when he filled in as the city solicitor and Mayor Morse did not pay him the full salary. I don't know why. Only, only Mayor Morse can answer that. We have a chance to correct it and do the right thing. I've yet to hear an argument why she doesn't deserve this money.
Mister President?
Counselor Bacon.
And, um, just on that point, I do not believe we were sued in that situation either. And I, I think that's just, um, being used as a strategy. Thank you.
Alright. Seeing no one further, motion was for the second reading, if I remember correctly. Motion, uh, Counselor, wait, hold on, Counselor Hernandez? Did you just have your hand up?
No, sorry, Mister President. I thought that you were gonna move forward so I could, and I was trying to unmute myself.
Oh, okay. No, I saw the hand go. Okay. So if there's no one further, motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for. No is against.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Brady?
No.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Brad Martinez?
I'm sorry, Mister President. Miss, um, Counselor Martinez had to leave, um, and asked me to excuse her, please.
I understand. I know, I know there's a family issue right now, so understandable. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisi? Beth? McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Eight yays, four nays.
Uh, you'd need nine votes for passing on the first night, so that does not pass.
The motion reconsider our action.
Motion is to reconsider. All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
No.
We have a show of hands for reconsidering.
Oh, that's a great.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Counselor Leahy, are your hands up or no, or?
It's up.
So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eh, be eight. Raise an eight. So that's reconsider.
Take a motion later table.
Motion is to lay on the table.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
No.
No.
This is gonna go on forever. This is ridiculous.
Talk about using procedure.
No kidding.
Use your own words, Joe. You, you use procedure to get your way.
Hold on, motion.
Calling me out. You, you crybaby.
No further discussion to, to table, raise hands, please. Please, raise hands to table. Order, please, order.
This is great.
Voting to table, please raise your hand. Some of you have no camera on, so.
Voting to table?
Voting to table, raise hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, okay.
And Counselor Leahy, right? Do you count him?
Counselor Leahy?
Yep.
And that's raising hands, that'd be eight. So that is laid on the table. Off to thirty-four. This is the injured on duty. Would there be a motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading tonight?
Don't move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We know it's injured on duty. This is for the patrolmen. I do not have a sheet to tell you if it's three, four, or five. It's not attached. But as you can see, it's for twenty-four thousand, seven, sixteen, twenty-six dollars for injured on duty. Counselor McGivern, do you have the sheet for that, or?
I, I do not. Um, I don't think the auditor is with us, but.
I know last time it was five. Like, I, I do remember last time it was five. It might be the same five.
Mi- Mister President?
Counselor Grady.
I, I just wanna go back. If I, I, I just have procedural question on the last issue. I just have a parliamentary question on that.
Sure.
If the motion is defeated, and the motion was defeated eight to four, that ends it. How can you lay something on the table that's been defeated?
Because you had a motion to reconsider, and the reconsider allows you to take it back up and consider reactions.
Okay.
Okay, so thirty-four is injured on the duty. I know we don't have the sheet, but like I said, the last one was five for this one. Motion would be to pass the first reading. We passed it. Motion would be to pass the second reading. Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for. As we all know, this is just a statutory accounting mechanism that they do.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
President? Mister President?
Counselor Grady.
I just have another procedural question, if I may.
Sure.
Apparently, then, the minority vote, if it's a legal vote, and if it's effective and something fails, then that, that vote is negated by reconsideration and laying it on the table. Is that correct?
Motion is to reconsider reaction. They took that one up, and then there was a motion to table it after the reconsideration.
Right, so the actual, the, the minority vote on this issue then is moot. It just didn't, didn't count that, that it was defeated.
I mean, that's why, that's why there was a reconsideration, though, Counselor Grady.
I, I, I understand that, but I, I think in, eh, eh, you know, um, well, once again, um, I'm not an expert on Roberts rules, but, uh, I'm, I'm just, uh, I'm just baffled by, uh, by this committee, uh, when, 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 when something has been defeated at least four times now, four times. It's, that's all. I'm just baffled by it.
So I, item thirty-five, order then according to Mass General Law, the council hereby accept the DEP Connecticut River Cleanup Grant. Finance?
Take a motion that we, uh, receive item thirty-five, suspend the rules and move to pass the first reading for a purpose of adoption tonight.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading under discussion. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mister President. Um, first of all, I, I, the, uh, city engineer, uh, reached out to me to explain the significance of trying to pass this this evening. Um, so if he could bear with me, I'll just give you the, the explanation. Uh, I think everybody recognizes that Mass General Law's forty-four section fifty-eight, fifty-three A are the finance clause of the, of the state. The provisions of the, uh, the Deep Connecticut River, uh, CSO Cleanup Program is something that we have been receiving, uh, through the federal government, through the state, from the federal government for several years now. We share this, uh, grant with the cities of Chickaby and Springfield. Each year has been a different percentage accordingly to the work that one of the communities is ready to do. Uh, for example, uh, last year, we did receive a significant grant and, uh, we applied it towards the Jackson Street. We received a million-dollar portion of this grant this year. And we're gonna apply it towards the Jackson Street project, which is the second biggest CSO project that we've taken on. Uh, Mister Barrett told me that just recently, Chickaby announced they, they had a, um, I'm sorry, they had a, a portion of the award this year, which, uh, totaled two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They cannot use it this year. So they are backing out of their commitment to use that money. If that money is not, is not used between Hoyok and Springfield, it will go back to the State's General Fund and will not be, uh, available next year. So therefore, if we vote to accept, Springfield, I believe, has already voted to expect, eh, except, we will get an additional a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to use towards the CSO project itself, which is the one that's in, it's active right now is, is Jackson Street. There are no matches. We have voted for this fund in the past. I think Mister Barrett makes a good point that we are jeopardizing, losing this hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars if we don't act, uh, accordingly and swiftly.
Counsel, Counsel Bartley?
Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote to do this for the exact same reason I voted, I would have voted if I had not been frozen out. If I didn't, I didn't get the courtesy of a, to cast a ballot, because I was, uh, uh, frozen in the Zoom meeting. But for the exact same reason, I would have, I would have passed the other one. Now, we just heard, we just heard, we would have lost all control. So we sent it to finance, and now, but, but we, we heard from the acting mayor, we're gonna, we're gonna earn money by, by getting it earlier. But no, no, no. This body's gotta send it to finance, and then we're gonna pa- we're gonna, you know, we're gonna pass it. You know we're gonna pass it. You, you know we're gonna pass unanimously finance, and you were gonna pass unanimously on the fifteenth. You know we're gonna do that. So there's no reason, and there's nothing's gonna change, Mister President, between tonight and when we get it, two weeks from now. Not a single penny is gonna change. So whatever questions we ask, they're not even relevant. But yet, we did it. So now we're doing this. Now we're suspending our rules, and we're not sending to finance. Why, Mister President? Because we're gonna save some money. That's exactly the argument that the acting mayor made. That's exactly the argument that I would have made. But no, no, no. Let's do it. Let's do it the other way, because now it's, it's, because somebody else, some other department had wanted it that way. You, you know, Mister President, the duplicitous nonsense that goes on for, for certain counselors is ridiculous. And it continues to this day until somebody calls it out. So I'm gonna call it out. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern? Is it frozen?
No, I'm not frozen. It's just so ridiculous, I'm not even gonna respond.
Amen.
Alright, so here, we had a motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the grant. It's on, it's on mute.
Alright, you're on mute. So my answer is yes, because you're about to call me first.
Here you go.
Sorry. Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brady?
Yep.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous, though.
What, your vote, you approve that one? Thirty?
Mister President? Mister President?
Have a point of personal privilege, please, on finance.
Well, Counselor McGivern, yes?
Thank you. Um, there was supposed to be a late filed under my name coming in. I don't believe it's there, which involves a request from the school department, who has identified that, uh, mostly because of COVID, that the bus contract, uh, monies are, are not gonna, would not be used this, uh, fiscal year to the tune of a surplus of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Bus, bus contracts come within the general fund, uh, as part of our net school spending that we, we give to the schools themselves. Anthony Solos reached out to the auditor. The auditor reached out to the law department and, for, I'm not sure. I'm sure, you know, good reasons, it's not coming in this evening.
Now, there's a, there's a late file, aye.
Then I guess I don't need a personal privilege. Is it two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, just to go ahead, Counselor McGivern's talking about, it says.
To suspend and take out order, late file, aye, please.
Alright, most suspended rule, go up to late file, aye. All those in favor? All opposed?
Mister President, I just said it goes to committee.
Okay, so two fifty.
They'll say it said it wasn't gonna be filed.
So two fifty from public school, other expenses, to health insurance. This is where they're looking to. So that's going to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mister President. Um, I, I'd like to ask us to reconsider our action on item thirty-seven in light of the vote that we just took on item thirty-five, since the logic and the rationale is the same on both votes. It would seem prudent for us to listen to our acting mayor and approve it tonight as we just did with item thirty-five.
Second.
Motion is reconsider our actions on thirty-seven. It was seconded. Uh, Counselor McGivern?
Mister President, there, there, I'm not gonna say it's apples and oranges, and I get the, uh, I get the arguments, although I think they're starting to sound more personal than, than logical. But, you know, if you look at the two different items, item thirty-five was a time constraint that involved the loss of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars because it's something that just came to the attention of the city, city engineer. And, and he, I asked, he asked that we try to pass it this evening, and I did so on his behalf. Item thirty-seven, I made my argument. It's written as a grant to establish a fund to be spent accordingly. And once we adopt it, it can be spent accordingly with the city treasurer and the mayor's own discretion. I, I, you know, I, I think there's questions out there, and that's why I asked for it to go to committee. And that's why I think there's an apple and an orange, uh, interpretation here going on.
Alright, so then, my, Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. And so from my perspective, we've had a pretty thorough explanation from our acting mayor, who has explained to us that these monies will be handled in a similar fashion to the CDBG, which is a, um, prescriptive, uh, process. And if we go ahead and set this fund up, it's what our auditor has requested us to do. And I think in the same way that we honor the request from a department head, our auditor's request should be honored, and our acting mayors should be honored as well. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern, is your hand up again, or is that from before?
Yes, it is. Just clarification, the auditor has not asked that we adopt this, this evening, only Mayor Murphy. And for the first time hearing it was this evening itself. I've asked this question, and I've heard two different answers. Is it's one thing when, when some of this money is gonna be used with the black grant formula for money that stays outside the general budget. There is another thing when the money is gonna be used to supplement or be part of the general fund budget. And I made the argument that those dollars need to be appropriated or appropriatedly, you know, specifically to the items that they're gonna be used for. And that's, that's not just weighing in on this process. That's us doing our diligence and having to take a final vote. And that question is not, is that back and forth for the last three months of answers on that question. And we've not heard the final federal government answer, yet alone state or local answer to those questions. Two weeks. We need to, we need to find out soon, and I would like to get the answers to those questions.
So motion is to reconsider our actions on thirty-seven. That's one. You need three. Only two, one. So motion is reconsider. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
I need a show of hands for reconsideration. Please raise your hand if you wanna reconsider thirty-seven. One, two, three, four. I see four. Unless I'm missing it.
Leahy's up.
Brady's, but what? Grady?
In Leahy.
That's six. Need seven. Alright, so, but, is someone's microphone on?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so back to thirty-eight.
Mister President, before we concede point of personal privilege.
Ca- Counselor Grady, what was that?
A point of personal.
A point of personal privilege, please.
Yes, sir.
Uh. Um, I'd I'd like to 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 know if there is, you know, from legal. If there is a a limitation on the number of times that an item can be tabled.
Okay, so if Leo can get back to us with that for June fifteenth, be fair to give him time?
Yes.
Alright. Alright, so with that, thirty-eight from Counselor Murphy. Uh, ordinance update to reflect the new June nineteenth holiday to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thirty-nine. Is from Counselor Sullivan, Counselor McGee, that H E D P W, didn't we take this up or?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, that was already done, so that's already in committee. Forty is from Counselor Bacon. Replace the no parking signs on Homestead Ave near McMahon School, motion be receive, adopt, send to DPW. Counselor, you're on mute. Counselor Bacon on mute.
Yes, receive, adopt and refer to DPW, please.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Forty-one is from Counselor Anderson Burgos, that the city engineer evaluate and make suggestions to address the.
Could we um take forty-one and forty-two as a package?
Motion to spend rules, take up forty-one and forty-two as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed forty-one is the city engineer evaluate. Beach Street uh with regards to Portland Street and London Street and uh the speeding that's going on to there. So that'd be receive, send to engineer, do you wanna go to public safety?
Public safety, both the up as well.
That that'd be public safety, forty-two is, or that the sidewalk. Between sixteen and forty-eight nowhere be replaced, it's become hazardous, so those are.
Mr. President.
Yep.
Can I make a friendly suggestion on forty-one? It's it's the police department that does the speed stuff too. They have to do a study.
Alright, so with a cop, so forty-one is receive to the engineer and a copy to the police as well. Then to public safety, forty-two would be, I'd say, receive, adopt, send to DPW with a copy to public safety. To get a follow-up.
Yep.
Alright. So so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Forty-three is.
The President, let's take up, if we may, uh forty-three and forty-four as a package, please, and ship them to DGR.
Alright, forty-three and forty-four as a package, all those in favor? Opposed forty-three is from Counselor Bartley, Counselor Granny, Counselor Murphy, Sullivan, Tomlin. And Bacon, that they invited Jordan Hart from the Chamber of Commerce, that's to DG and R. Forty-four is surplus property. Uh, from from the street, both to DG and R, all those in favor? Forty-five is from Counselor Handes, that uh DPW HPD. Conduct a traffic study on the corner of Pine and Appleton Street for high speed. So motion be receive, adopt.
Send to public safety, please.
So receive, send to DPW HPD with a, and to public safety.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed forty-six is from Counselor Handes, uh. Or a study to find if speed humps could be installed on Linden between Hampshire and Sergeant Street. Send to, they have the temporary ones, so it would be receive, adopt, put in the temporary speed humps. And report back to public safety with the results for that. Okay?
Sure.
Okay, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We do have a few late files, A is from mass cannabis growers. May twenty-sixth, response to Hoyok Office of Plan Economic Development for eleven Jackson Street, send to ordinance. Yes?
Yes, he's sent to ordinance.
Uh, all those in favor? And opposed, I thought it froze again.
Mr. President, what 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 what's being sent? Cause I, do I, do we have that sent to us?
It it's a late file, that's why, so it's mass cannabis growers co-op. May twenty-six, twenty twenty, response to Hoyok Office of Economic Development, May twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. Comments of special permit application for eleven Jackson Street factory building submitted by. Uh, February twenty-two, twenty of twenty-one and discussed the Zoom call with Jeff Burkott and. So it it looks like a package with regards to that.
And who who filed this order?
It it, I think it's a communication, it's a communication.
Oh, okay, so communication from home, the clerk?
Looks like a communication sent to us by the mass cannabis.
Okay, can can we get a copy of that, please?
Yeah, oh yeah. I'm seeing it for the first time too as a late file. B is from Counselor Murphy, we're at the finance committee, move the order, director of planning and development to discuss. Pro uh problems and benefits of uh host agreements, so to finance.
Finance.
All those in favor? All those opposed? C is. A marijuana ordinance language. This is.
Is it for the stabilization fund or the impact fee?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, please send it to ordinance.
To ordinance, all those.
Can you, can you read what it is?
So it. An ordinance, uh mending one hundred and seventy-third amendment of chapter two of the revised code of ordinances. Um, this is the stabilization fund, adding in stabilization fund. Uh, language with regards to the cannabis industry.
So if I may add a discussion, Counselor McGee?
No, it's a late file.
It's a late file.
Yeah, it just seems like people are looking for clarity about what it's about, this is the the filing that we got from the legal department to create the impact fee stabilization fund. Which needs to be acted on before the end of the fiscal year.
So that goes to ordinance.
Right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I was D. Um, looks like a communication from the acting mayor. Uh, actually, no, it's from the legal department, this is regarding your request for an opinion. For rule sixty-six, simple majority versus super majority, everyone should have got the email today on this one. Some motions to.
Receive.
All those in favor?
Oh, hold on, hold on, yeah, I like, let's let's send that, let's send it to a uh, cause I I wanna go over this one, Mr. President, so so we don't have to go. We have to go through those hoops again, so we all know the darn rules.
Alright, so charter and rules.
Charter rules, please, yeah, thank you.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Thank you.
E is also from the law department, this is regarding the city solicitor pay. Um, which we talked about just recently. Send this to receive and send to finance, receive and send to charter and rules, whatever.
Charter rules, probably.
Alright, so charter and rules, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? F. Is from Counselor McGivern, this is the D C R urban grant for four thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars. Send to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? G is also from Counselor McGivern, it's a hundred and fifty dollars, I almost said a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty dollars. From cost to urban forestry challenge, send finance, all those in favor?
Alright.
H is from Counselor McGivern, this is. Uh, pay Mayor A three thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars to Personnel Administrator, uh, send to finance.
To the finance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
J is a letter or communication from uh Mayor Murphy. Please be advised, I have appointed Ms. Sheila Brenneman for Personnel Director effective June seventh.
Send to public service.
She'll be paid sixty-four thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars. Um. Is this would, yeah, Counselor Bacon?
Is this her HR person?
Correct.
Oh. Alright, so maybe make a motion to approve?
Second.
With a copy to public service?
So you'd have to, motion be to suspend the rules, take up final action tonight?
Suspend the rules and take up final action.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? As Counselor Murphy pointed out earlier, the person can start June seventh, if not approved. It would be June sixteenth, I think you said, or something like that.
Right.
Okay. My years are good tonight.
Before he talks, I I wanna withdraw my motion because this is a huge position and I'd probably have a lot of questions, so. I withdraw my motion of approving it tonight.
Well, Counselor, Counselor Tomlin, uh, made a motion to suspend rules, take up final action, which we did. Now it's, is there a motion to send a committee when I'm hearing Counselor A or no? I missed that.
No.
I mean, I I think so, I mean, this is a department head, I just wanna give a department head position without knowing, it's gonna be a week or two, maybe two weeks. Um, I think this person could start, you know, this person's qualified, I I don't know who this person is, this person is called me.
Alright, so motion is.
A point of information, please.
Counselor Vic.
Thank you, so I understand that during the period of time where we have an acting mayor, the mayor needs to bring. Appointments that are typically made solely by the mayor to the city council. And I just wanna clarify, would this be an appointment that typically the mayor would make without? City council input or is this one?
We we appoint, we approve the appointment. Just like Hector.
Of that particular role, okay, I just wanted clarification on that.
No, 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 good question. Counselor McGivern?
I I know Counselor Murphy's uh intentions are good and I commend him for finding the candidates and uh vetting them and screening them. But we we don't even have a resume in front of us, um, I think one of the most important interviews I can remember over recent years. Was when Hector came before uh, before the Public Service Committee and we talked with him for probably forty-five minutes to an hour. About the the shortcomings in the HR department, about the need for change and Hector proved uh. To do a lot of what was talked about at the city council level when he took over as a, as our HR director. So I I'd like to meet this person before she's confirmed and uh, I I mean, usually a person gives two weeks notice. From the job that they have, it's unusual that they can start so quick, so I I think two weeks is not asking a lot.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, normally I I would agree with that, I I would only, or to do this, but you know, I don't remember us sending Lisa Balls. Uh, I I believe she was able to start right away. So I'm just wondering.
That went to committee, that's it.
No, I I reckon, let me finish. I recognize that that went to committee, but she's inserted into the position first, how in the world is this different? So why don't we, why don't we go ahead, put the person in the position now, consistent with what we just did with Attorney Ball? I know Attorney Ball was with us, with the city years ago, ten, over ten years ago, I understand that. But I I don't see how this is any different, so let's put her into the position. Uh, temporarily with a similar motion to what we have for Lisa and send it to committee for for um, for another approval, but I I'll tell you what. Uh, Mr. President, just like the other orders. It's gonna get approved in committee, it's gonna get approved here two weeks from now, I'm not Nostradamus, I just know it's gonna happen. So, so I I just in terms of consistency, you know, maybe we could. Do do something uh to help the city move forward, particularly the acting mayor, so I would be in favor of taking final action.
Motion is take final action, that was seconded under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, there uh, there is a difference between what happened with with Attorney Ball and what's happening with a new person. We've never met for a position that we're confirming for a permanent position. Lisa Ball was appointed as the acting solicitor for vacancy, which a mayor can do. And and we did vet Lisa Ball and she has a position, which I think is is also gonna be considered acting. Cause she's only gonna be with us until the new mayor appoints the uh, a new city solicitor themselves. This confirmation is for a permanent position, which once it's made, that that new person becomes the permanent. HR director and I think that's the big difference. The consistent way we do business is new appointments go to committee.
Alright, so motion, but Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, if I, I, I mean, I appreciate all the thoughts and comments, my I I, my concerns, my concerns are several. Uh. You know, I've been acting mayor now for seven weeks, we've been trying to get. Uh. Updated resumes, we originally had very few, we we expanded, we got, I think, seven altogether that we ended up interviewing. Uh. The uh, person that is doing the uh acting job in the Personnel Department is. Feeling correctly that, you know, she's kinda feeling overburdened. Uh. My other concern, and I don't, I'm not, this is not a threat, so please don't take it as, I I, my concern would be that this person also. If if, in fact, she's not starting on Monday, uh. You know, I don't know, I don't, I don't know if she's got, I know she was looking and she had applied. Here and she has made it sound like she had applied to the places, but uh, so, I mean, if if all of a sudden. She says no, then, you know, we're gonna go into August. Potentially, uh, without, I I know the next person that we we had talked to. Had just accepted another job, so uh, I mean, that's that's my concern, at some point, I mean, I know. And I will tell you that it was myself and and Noka Ortiz from the office, we interviewed, it was uh, reviewed by Naomi. Uh, uh, from the Personnel Department, uh. You know, I mean, I and I and I wish I had the resumes here, had I realized that I had to come to the council for this, I would have. Tried to make sure I had done that and by the time I started doing it, uh, I did not have them in front of me, so. Uh, I mean, those are concerns and obviously, you know, I'll I'll honor what the council wants and uh. I mean, I know both uh, Noka and myself were pretty impressed with this person. I mean, she's done a variety of personnel issues for a variety of areas. Uh. And we were both impressed with her cultural diversity and her uh. Her uh excitement in terms of trying to reach out to our employees. To make sure they were properly trained, to make sure when they came on board that things were going well, what what can we do better? Uh, she's had experience in terms of handling disputes. Uh, so she, you know, she's had a lot of, a lot of personnel experience and that's, I mean, I can only tell you what I, what I was impressed by her with, so. Uh. But I, I'll honor whatever the the council wishes.
Counselor. Counselor Granny?
Yeah, how about the educational uh requirements, how about the education of this person?
I believe it, and I wish I could tell you, I I believe she had a bachelor's and then a master's. Uh, and I. I'd have to go back and, again, I turned the resumes over once we made this to Personnel, so I don't have them at handy. And I'm sorry, Counselor Granny.
Okay.
Counselor Leahy, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, yep, I did, uh, there's a huge difference. Uh, I've known. Lisa Ball for twenty-something years. I know her, we know her, she's worked here, uh, so putting that together, that's apples and oranges, it's not just fruit. Uh. Having her, Lisa Ball come in, starting day one. Is 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 significant because she knows the position, we don't know this person. I have a zero resume, uh, resumes in front of me, I have no idea who this person is. For the fact that you want me to vote on somebody tonight that I've never met, that never looked at a CV, is just wrong. I certainly won't do it and I encourage other people not to as well.
Counselor McGivern?
We don't, we don't know the education background, we don't know the employment history, where she's worked. Um, I I I just think two weeks is not a lot to ask. You know, these are fundamental questions, it's a good way for the council to meet someone who will be working with for years to come, um. You know, Counselor Bartley's probably right, you know, you know, I I trust Mayor Murphy, but. To do our job, we should do our job, it should go to committee so we can ask questions and meet the person.
Alright, so the motion that was seconded was to take final action tonight and vote to confirm Sheila Brenneman. Um, we'd have to do a roll call to appoint her, isn't that correct? Do you know, we haven't done this since Hector?
Have to go to the first ballot for sure, but I was gonna say, you you gotta do the motion to recon, uh, to. No, we.
Well, really, the motion.
The motion to suspend the rules and take final action first.
We already, we already did that, we already did that. Yeah, we already did, that that's why I'm hesitating to go forward, because we did motion to suspend rules, take final action. And then it kinda went sideways to.
Do you know where she is, do you know where she lives?
Well, I'm just telling you the procedure, I'm just trying to make sure we're on the same page.
Do we have some sort of background before we take this vote?
I don't, I don't know anything about.
Elizabeth Wilberham.
Alright.
Uh, there we go. She is a supervisor at the uh. At Eastfield Mall, uh, vaccination site. Uh, she currently, currently, or. Previously had a hundred and seventy-five people that were working for. Uh, had background in human resources with other. uh, had background in human resources with other companies as well. Uh,
Make a motion to send to public service.
Second. Second.
The motion is to send to public service. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
I heard more ayes than no, now I hear two noes. If I was correct, if I'm wrong, correct me?
Show hands.
I'd say the ayes, show of hands to send it to public service. Show your hands, raise your hands, please.
Leahy.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, so seven.
Leahy.
Leahy.
Eight is Granny. So it goes to public service. That was J. There are no other late files, so the motion would be to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn, all those in favor?
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.